Terrific, all you. Who, oh, oh, sorry.
All right, and let's see what time it is. All right, the time is now five oh two, I am calling to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. And this is as of June twenty six, twenty twenty five, public hearing. Commissioners present, and let's see, we've got. Commissioner Steel, Commissioner Fleck, Commissioner Feingold. And are we missing anyone? I'm not seeing everyone.
So Mark, so Mark and Ralph are out today, and they called out in advance, yes.
All right. And today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications. Uh, in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order, suspending certain provisions of the opening meeting law, including the March twenty eight, twenty twenty five amendment, extended suspension of these provisions. Until June thirty is twenty twenty seven, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the. Beacon House Architectural Commission. The public may access the call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public and attended until the hearing has adjourned. Uh, are there any media or executive uh or elected officials currently present?
Let's see if we see Dan, I don't see Dan, he'll probably be here shortly, so. Um, I'm not seeing any uh elected officials. Uh, if you are an elected official, just raise your hand in the app and we'll um, we'll recognize you. Seeing none, um, so it does not look like we have any of those, um, and I'll let you know when Dan's here, just for awareness.
All right, fine, and. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
And that just, uh, our Arian just acknowledging that Annette has arrived.
Annette, I don't see you, but welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So uh, we're switching it up a little bit, Arian, in case you don't remember, but we're doing the meeting minute vote. Um, first, and then we'll go to the first applications.
Okay. Now, does, is anybody in need of rat kind, ratifying the public hearing meetings from our last meeting, last month's meeting?
Yeah, since I was not there, I need to abstain from the minutes, oh, right?
Uh, you don't have to if you read them, but you, you can if you'd like, it's fine.
Okay, I'm not hearing anyone saying yay or nay. I'm gonna say the nays have it.
So you just do a, do a motion?
I move, we approve.
Go move. Second.
All right, then we'll do the vote. Commissioner Allen, aye.
Aye.
Aye, Givens.
Aye.
Oh, we got Fleck.
You abstained.
That's why you abstained, sorry about that, and Feingold.
Aye.
All right, so pass.
Perfect.
All right, violation review. Do we have forty one Phillips Street?
There's a representative for forty one Phillips Street, please raise your hand. And we will unmute you, I see Louie there. Okay. Louie should be able to talk now.
I mean.
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, hi, um, so I realized we're in violation with the Entercom box with the LED lighting. So we submitted the application along with plans to, um, yeah, there it is. To have that box, the Entercom box enclosed. Uh, we've reached out to a vendor. Uh, Magoo Buffalo, uh, they're out in New York, they're manufacturing it, and we're looking to have it in a couple of weeks to install it, and I've sent the specs over and shared them with, um, Mr. Armada. There they are.
And. Was that all that we had listed there? Or is there more?
That's it.
Oh, I thought the light was there.
What was, I can barely hear you, what were you saying?
I, I thought the light was also noticed as a violation, no?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Um, so, uh, Arian, just if I could just provide some background here, so this, um, violation was reported to me by a member of the community. Um, as you know, um, the, uh, these butterfly units are not appropriate for the neighborhood, however, in certain circumstances, um, there are instances where we can permit them, and that is when, um, uh, when you cover them with a brass box, the box, um, and the, the certain circumstances in which they can be approved, when the wall they're mounted on is facing away from the street, meaning in a kind of vestibule such as you see here, the box is not, um, covering any architectural detail, in this instance, we will center the box, um, right between, uh, this kind of architectural detail here, so that it will not obscure, um, uh, any of those details from the street. Um, there are no major, um, interior renovations happening in this circumstance, this is a condo unit, so there are no major, um, interior renovations happening where they could integrate, uh, this a little bit easier, um, so that's not happening. Um, and, and that's essentially it from what I can remember, so, um, uh, this would be an appropriate, uh, location or, or circumstance for a brass box, though, um, these, these intercoms are not ideal, uh, and you still have to apply for them. Uh, this circumstance, um, could justify, if with your approval, of course, um, the brass box that we've seen in other locations throughout the neighborhood. Um, in this circumstance, um, there's a little hole on top that's meant for the camera to, um, see out into the street, so you still have that surveillance option. And, uh, this would be, um, an appropriate location. What will happen is, we will take off this metal trim right here, so this will no longer be on, um, the wall here, and it will be mounted, um, uh, evenly, uh, in that space there, just between that architectural detail, so, um, staff is recommending, uh, an approval for, uh, this violation. Uh, with the contingency that it's completed within ninety days.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, do you have any questions based upon what Nick had just said?
No questions.
No questions, all right, let's bring in the public. All right. And let's see Zoom etiquette, let's take a good look at that, please remain muted until called upon. If you'd like to speak during the public, um, comment period for each application, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, so staff can unmute attendees. All right, and please limit your comments to two minutes, so we can all have a chance to speak and, uh, move things along.
Terrific, okay, uh, Arian, it looks like we have Holland, uh, for the, um, uh, first, uh, comment. From Civic Association.
Let's see Holland's hand. Thank you very much. Uh, we do not oppose ratification of the video intercom when concealed with a brass or bronze cover box to satisfy guideline E seven. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Terrific.
Is anybody else for public? Comment, or is that, was that all for public comment?
Not seeing any of the public comment, uh, Arian, so we can close it for this application.
All right, we are now closing public comments, and back to the commissioners. Were there any takeaway from this, anything that was, that you feel that you want to object to? Any commissioner?
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a?
A motion? I'm that with the comments that, uh, Mr. Armada made. We should approve this design, and it should be done in ninety days.
Second.
All right, and most of them have been seconded. Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner. Given.
Aye.
Commissioner Fleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioners Steel.
Aye.
Are so approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Louie, you're all set, I'll get you an approval letter, uh, into your email tomorrow, and, um, if you need anything else, just let me know. Um, and then just a firmly reminder that all exterior changes, um, that's visible from a public way, uh, do require an application and approval by the commission, okay?
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.
My design reviews.
Type, um, we have another forty one Phillips Street application here, and I believe, um, Guy Crossy will be speaking for this application.
Is Guy present?
There he is right there, all right. Go ahead, Guy, and thanks for your patience on this application.
No problem, how are you, I'm, um. Can you, you could, um, enable my video, just so you can see my handsome face. Um. Or not. Um, and if you can, I could, you mind, um, letting me share my screen and I can make the presentation?
Uh, yeah, uh, let's see, so I will stop sharing, there you go.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, uh, good afternoon, and thank you for, uh, hearing our project, this is a, an interior renovation project that we're doing in a, in a condominium unit at, uh, forty, at the same building, forty one Phillips Street. Coincidentally, or not. But the, uh, the, um, the project is, um, the, the one element that the, my client wants to do is to, is to propose a, an awning, um, on the side of the building to, to screen his deck, just to provide some shade in the summer, because it gets really hot in the summer on the deck. Um, he's got, if you look at this, this, um, Google Earth image, it shows you the location, this is the building, and there's a wing, an annex on the building at forty one Phillips. It was an old trade school that was renovated, I don't know, thirty years ago. Uh, into condominiums, the terrace that he has is this space right here. Um, on that, on that second floor roof, so it's the third, the third floor level, so it's up in the, you know, it's up fairly high above the sidewalk. Um, we didn't think that this awning was actually visible from anywhere. Um, we, um, we did a mock-up, and, um, I, I don't remember how we actually discovered this, maybe Nick, you, you might have discovered this when we did the block. Uh, but there seems to be one spot right down here at, at the, um, at the next block down, where that little triangle that we're showing you. Um, when, if you're standing there, and then in that triangle, you can look up and see across the parapet and see the corner of the awning we're proposing. Um, there's a bunch of trees here that, when they're in bloom, make it very difficult to see anything there. But when the, when the leaves are off the trees, um, that a little corner of that awning is visible, now, the awning won't be used in the winter when there's no leaves on the trees, it's really just for midsummer when it gets hot up there. Um, but, you know, it is what it is, it's a retractable awning. Um, so what we've got is, um, a bunch of photographs, here is the, um, a picture from across the street. Um, this is the parapet, and the mock-up is, is, is beyond view from here, so you can't see it. Um, from across the street, as you get down the street, you still don't see it. Um, it would be back in here, it actually starts right about there, and it sits below this little, um, brick detail, uh, or just on it, I guess. Um, and then as you get down the hill, you still don't see it, because the, the street's descending. So the further down the hill you go, the, you know, the steeper the angle again, so, again, that's, we didn't, I guess we didn't go far enough to, to check it. Um, right about here is where you start to begin to see it, and it would be right there. Um. These are not the mock-up photos, these are just the, the drawings, or the, the conditioned photos. Here is the.
Oh, so I'm sorry, question, can you go back to the last, uh?
Yeah. We have photos up, uh, from the same angle with the mock-up constructed, so I'll show you those in a second.
Okay, quick question, Nick. Where, um, how far out were you when you could see it?
There's, there's photos in here, we'll show you, um, um, when guys ready to show, we have, um, photos there, yep.
Yeah, they're coming right up here, it's basically right about here, is, you can see the corner of the building here, and it's when you get, that's the triangle, it starts right about the middle of the street here and goes to the far side. Um, but let me show you this first, just so you get the understanding of the, of the layout. This is the, um, the terrace that exists, and we're proposing the awning, um, pushed back from the edge. Um, so it's not, you know, it, ideally it would be centered, but we've moved it back just to make it less visible. Um, and, uh, um, here's an, a partial elevation, so this is facing west. Um, and that box right there is the container for the awning. And it's motorized, so you press a button and it telescopes out. You know, from the wall, so the box is all you're gonna see in the winter. And then, obviously, in the summer, when the awning's extended, which is, is only gonna, you only extend it when you're using it, because it's not really designed to handle high winds and things like that. So you retract it when you, you know, when you leave. Um, but that's the sightline from across the street. Um, but again, when you get far down the hill, you can see it, and we're proposing to mount it right below this little series of brick arches. It's a one-course corbeled of little brick arches that were on the original building, and then the cornice above that, so it sits between the, the lintel and that, and that, um, that brick corbeled course. Um. This is, these are photos of the mock-up, and these were taken in the winter, obviously, there's no leaves on the trees. Um, you know, from here, you can't see it. Um. And again, from, from this vantage point, you don't see it, this is the area with leaves. Um, where, where it would be. And then, as you move up the street a little bit, you begin to see it right here. Now, if you had a chance to see the mock-up, there's a, a vertical brace that holds it up, that brace won't be there, so in this photo, we actually photoshopped that vertical brace out, so that it didn't distract you, this is the, the view that you'll have if I zoom in. You can see this two-by-four stud that, that actually shows you the location of the end of that awning. Um, again, if you go out there and look at it, and the mock-up's still there, there's a post right there, but we've, you know, taken it out, because it obviously won't be there. Um, but that's it, and then, and then it, if, the, the awning goes from here that way, we, we didn't mock that up, because we thought this was the part that you'd be most concerned with. Um, so that's, that's kind of it, uh, you know, this is, I mean, I'll zoom back out again, so in the winter, if he were to ex, you know, to, to extend the awning, this is the view you would have of it. You know, behind that tree branch, those branches, you know, it, it, it would live. Um, and again, it's only from that spot, and the, this is a current photo, this was taken last week. Um, or two weeks ago, I think, when the leaves were coming out on that tree, and, uh, it's obviously very difficult to see if you zoom way in. Um, I think you can, well, I can't, it's still too blurry to actually see it, but I think you can peek between leaves and see it, so we can't even say that it's not visible in summer, but it's, it's pretty, pretty difficult to even know it's there, um.
Yeah, yeah, Guy, I was out there last yesterday, and I did grab a photo, um, if you're done with your presentation, I can show, and, but it does kind of verify what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's minimally visible, um, let me take a look.
And this is just, I just wanted to show you, that's what it looks like when it's extended, this is obviously not the, the awning, but that's the tube that will be there permanently, and everything goes into that tube, this cover just becomes part of the tube, it's like a cover that goes on it, and that's the whole thing, and then when it's extended, this is what you see. And then, this is the color of the frame that we're proposing, it's, it's dark gray, and the fabric is this tan color. Um, so that's it, that's the presentation, and I can unshare.
All right. All right, and then, uh, commissioners, this was the photo that I took, um, yesterday, uh, yesterday, am I talking, yeah, um. Sorry about that, what did I do? Sorry, sorry, guys.
If you move around in that little triangle, there's, there's, there's some places where, you know, my guess is you can see it a little bit more and a little bit less, but it's just this one little triangle on that corner where it's visible from.
So Nick, you were out there.
Yep.
What was your takeaway?
Okay, uh, sorry, my air, let me just show you this, I fixed this. Okay, all right, um, so that is what you see here, that was, this was taken yesterday, you can see right here that this is the, um, the mock-up here, the, um, the awning will be a darker color, so you won't see it, it won't be as apparent, um, I, I guess my thoughts, uh, in terms of my recommendations, I would either, uh, move it over slightly so that this vantage point is no longer visible, or, um, if you, um, uh, can change the color a little bit to make it a little bit more brown rather than black, that would also be a, a better way of kind of shielding it. Um, or the other option is, um, you know, they do have those big umbrellas, and those are outside of our purview, so either way, I think would be, uh, an appropriate solution, this is minimally visible. Um, and there's some other ways that we can make it even less visible, uh, from, uh, the one vantage point in which you can see it.
And you mentioned the whole, uh, umbrella idea, that was something that was not, uh, I guess something that the, the, that your customer wasn't interested in, guy?
Yeah, no, they, they would prefer not to, I mean, that's, that's a, that's an option, um, um, but it's, th- this really is, works better for them, and it provides them the cover on the area of that terrace that they would really want it. Um, if.
If you move it over, excuse me, if you move it over, you lose the shade control of the, of the window.
Well, that's, that's part of the problem.
You wouldn't move it.
Yeah, if you.
I mean, I don't. Having seen the color, I mean, I, I, I think it's, it, it's a temporary thing, in the, when, when they're out there, they'll extend the awning. And then when it's not that, and I assume they're, you know, smart enough, and they're, since it won't work in the breeze, when they're not out there, they'll retract the awning.
Right.
Uh, so to me, it's a de minimis thing, it, it's, it's hardly worth the discussion, frankly, I think it's fine.
Awesome takeaway, anyone else? Either the same opinion or a different opinion?
I would tend to agree with Mo, um, if we could adjust the color, Guy, if there's a a more, a color that camouflages it a little bit more, other than the, the stock color, that would probably be very helpful.
Sure, we, we can work with Nick on that.
And that, and is this something, Nick, that you'd want to specify the attachment to be in the joints rather than the masonry, it's a.
Yeah, was literally gonna say, if you do this, yeah, if you decide to prove this, that would be my recommendation for installation methods, um, that it's installed through the mortar joints and not the brick itself, um, so that it can be reversible, and then, of course, also, um, if there's any electricity that needs to be hooked up, the conduit should not be visible from areas of our purview.
Yeah, but all that's easy enough.
Excellent.
Right.
Someone was saying something? Okay, all right, if there aren't any more, uh, comments from the commissioners, let's bring in the public. All right, public, this is your chance to have a, uh, to make a comment, and please do use that, see Holland's using it already. Uh, so raise your hand, function.
Okay. All right, um, uh, also, I just enabled folks to turn on their, their, uh, cameras if they want to, sorry about that, I turned off that function, so you should be able to turn on your cameras if you want to. There's Holland, uh, Holland, go ahead.
I thought you didn't want to see me, Nick.
I want to see you all the time.
Thank you very much, uh, Holland Ward Beacon House Civic Association. Our comment is, while awnings are historically appropriate, they would typically only cover individual window openings in either a commercial or residential application. We oppose this application as a proposed awning is large and modern in style and visible from a public way and does not satisfy guideline A three. We would additionally note, the mock-up begins at the fourth arch while drawings represented at the third arch, so the awning would be more visible than the mock-up might indicate. Thank you.
Are there any more, any other comments in the public?
Not seeing any of the public comment, Arian, so we can close it for this application.
We're not closing public comments. All right. So Guy, is that correct, are you starting under the fourth arch or the third?
Um, I can show you the elevation again. If I screen share. All right. There it is.
There it is.
Uh. Yeah, I'm not even sure you can see the arches from, from that, from that vantage point, you're so far away, you'd have to have really amazing vision, so it's the, it's the, sort of the middle of the third arch. And again, the arches are just one brick thick, so they're, you know, three and a half inches.
All right.
Yeah, very hard to see from the ground. There's a slight shadow from them.
And are you willing to work with, uh, Nick in getting a color that's maybe more appropriate, that could be an easier color block?
Sure.
All right.
Do they have like a, a, a bronze or like a brown color, um? A guy?
Of the box, yeah.
Yes.
I think that would be the best. Several options, and I think you can even, you know, yeah. We can, we can also paint it too, we have to.
But it's really that outer, the outer edge cover that makes the difference, right, because when it's out, it's out, but it's that clamshell convex piece that
Right.
covers it when it's closed.
Right.
That would make it, that's the piece that would actually make it disappear effectively, I think, if you had a good color.
And so you're able to work on the cover?
Yes, we can, we're happy to do it.
All right, all right, my fellow commissioners. I get a suspicion that we're, we might all be on one accord, but I'd love to hear from you, if I'm wrong, let me know. Anybody disagree with what we're hearing so far? Or a different, not necessarily disagreeing, but a different idea or a different opinion?
No, I think it's fine.
All right, well, go ahead, make a motion.
I make a motion to accept it as presented with a review of the color of the box and the awning to, uh, uh, to be in accordance with the discussion.
All right, well, so proviso that, that staff will be looking at the, uh, the color of the coverage, right?
Yes.
All right, anyone going to second this motion?
Well, I, could I offer the friendly amendment of the stipulations, I know Nick already mentioned, which were the installation in uh, mortar joints rather than in the masonry itself, and, uh, conduits would be, you know, um, not visible from the public way.
Was.
Thank you.
All right, so what's that amended, added, is anyone going to second the motion?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All right, Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner Fleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioner Given.
Aye.
And Commissioner Steel.
Aye.
All right, this has been so, woo, so fast.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thank you.
And Guy, you're next also, so.
Yes.
Oh, Guy, you are working today.
Hi.
All billable.
I try, I try.
At least I hope it is.
Fifty-six Beacon Street.
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, if I can, I can do the same thing as.
Go for it, Guy.
Okay. All right. Awesome, thank you. Um, this is a project that you've seen from us before, um, we just have some minor um, additional alterations that we would like to present. Um. Why am I having trouble finding?
And Guy, we're talking about the, um, the state, the front stairs, the headhouse, and the garage door, everything else I believe I put into administrative review.
Right. So here we go, sorry. Yeah. So this is the house, it's a fifty-six Beacon Street, um, it's a beautiful federal-style house. Um, the, the, the three things that we're, um, proposing, one is to rebuild this front stoop, because it's sagged badly. Rebuild this front stoop because it's sagged badly. And I'll show you some details, I will reuse the parts, the stone steps and the, and the end pieces. Um, and the parts of the railing that we can salvage, some of them are not in great shape, um. Um, you can, oh, let me get to. Larger images, here we go, so this is the, this is the stoop, um, these are twin buildings. The stoop just next to us at fifty-seventh is a little, is in better condition, uh, it's also sagged, but not quite as much. Um, and they're at slightly different elevations just because of the, um, the way the hill slopes. This block that's between them, this granite block would remain, um, but I'll show you some of those details. Uh, the second part of the application is that this is a nineteen fifties garage. Um, you would, were kind enough to grant this approval to replace the doors. And to replace the granite header, which has a crack in each one, this is actually get fractured right there. And the steel has failed and this one has fractured in a similar place. And the steel has failed underneath it, the, the, um, this, the brick, the relieving angle that supports it. Um, because they're only eight feet wide, it's very difficult for my clients to actually make the turn into the garage and not hit their mirrors. Um, they, the mirrors barely fit when you retract them. And it's, it's just a, it's a difficult turn to make, and they would love to be able to widen this door four inches on each side. Uh, so that, to get eight foot eight with the masonry opening versus eight feet, we would replace the lintel. With the new lintel, and we don't have to actually extend it because there'd still be four inches bearing at each end. So the lintel would not get wider, the opening would just simply get a little bit wider. Um, and again, this is not some historic carriage houses, a nineteen fifties garage. Um, and the, the do- door design would be the same one that you've approved, you would just, again, just widen the opening and replace the doors. Um, and this is just some other views of this. Um. Of that store system, you can see the cracks, and again, you had already approved replacing these granite lentils because they're, they are cracked and need replacement.
Right.
The last item.
Uh, Guy, before you leave that, just one quick question on the, the garage door, the center post, what's the, I'm sure it's in the elevation somewhere, I just can't find it. The resulting dimension on that post is what remains?
Yeah.
Four minus eight?
It's twenty inches, yeah, it's, it's two and a half bricks, it's twenty inches wide. And so we'll take eight inches out of that, so it'd be sixty, it would be four, uh, twelve inches wide at the end of the day. Because we'll take four inches from here, four inches from here, four inches from there, and the other side.
Got it. So it's twenty to start with, is what you're saying, and then that will be twelve?
That's correct. Um, and then the last part of this is that we had presented a, um, a, an elevator headhouse. That was, um, allowed for an elevator stop on the roof. Um, and that was denied by the commission, by you folks, and I, you know, we understand why. Um, but to put in then elevator that stops on the floor below, we need to extend it about three and a half feet above the roof. Um, so that was not approved because we hadn't applied for that. The current condition is that there's AC units in that, in the location of this elevator right here, behind this, this. This deck railing, there's a copper headhouse that's also visible from the street in that area. Those things are all being removed, this is the elevator shaft next door, obviously, these are pictures up on the roof level. Um, so this is what you're looking at currently from up on the roof and some, and then here are the actual drawings. Uh, for all three of these changes, and I'll, I'll show you some of the, um, some, some additional photos and mock-up renderings we have of the, of the other changes. Um, but if I can, um, I'll show you the. Oops. Sorry. There we go. Trying to zoom in, that's not letting me for some reason, I think it's because of the view. I'm not sure why I can't. Zoom. Well, sorry, that, this is the, the front stoop, um, this is the, the current location, um, shoot. My computer's giving me trouble today, um. Basically what's happened, and this is the side view of that stoop, is the, the. This must not be on any kind of a foundation, and as the sidewalk has settled over time, the stoop is attached to the house back here. And then the first tread has sagged, and it's sagged about three or four inches, and it's considerably out of level. Um, and it's, so this, it's all the treads slope downhill, and it's a little dangerous if there's any ice on it. And then all of, the whole metal railing system has racked, um. So it's, 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 it's peculiar looking, and, and there's some photos we have, uh, I can show you of the sides of it. So all, the, all we're proposing is to essentially take this all apart, rebuild the steps level. And put back the railing system, there are some of these vertical balusters that are set into, um, holes in the granite. And they've rusted out, and they've actually rustjacked some of the granite, and it, and it's spalled. So we're gonna have to repair the granite treads, but we'd like to replace the balusters because they're, they're rotted in, within the, you know, within the granite, and we'll. Have, we, there's an alternate method that we can have a pin inside the granite, not set the baluster itself right in it, so it doesn't do that again. Uh, there's a brass ball on it, we would reuse it, the handrail can probably be reused. Um, and we'll just replace everything exactly as it was, just square and straight. Um, so that's kind of it for the front stoop. Um, on the back, this is the garage. Um, so you can see the one foot eight brick pier, and that becomes a twelve inch brick pier, uh, when we widen the doors, and again, we just widen them. Eight inches each, four inches on all sides, and then on the roof plan, this is the, um. Proposed elevator headhouse, the top of that headhouse will be at, at the same level as the handrail of the deck, so there's an existing deck up here. Um, this is that hatch that was there, we're taking that away and moving it. So that we come up through the pitched roof here, um, in an area that's not visible, and we're taking all the. The AC units that are up there and moving them down below, and all of this was already approved, the only thing that wasn't was this, you know, the, um, the, the elevator headhouse. Here's a, a sightline drawing or a cross-section through it, so you can see this elevator headhouse, it'll be copper clad. Uh, similar to the actual, um, 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 hatch that's up there. Uh, and it all lives again at the level of that handrail. Um, which is about three and a half feet above the jack, it's a little bit more than that above the roof, just because of the way the, the deck is, you know, level, obviously, in the roof slopes. Um, and this is the view, obviously, it doesn't really show up in a black and white drawing, but the railing system will pass in front of it. Um, and then the, the copper headhouse will live behind the railing. So as you look up at it from the sidewalk, you'll obviously see the dark, the brownish copper for a while until it, you know, patina's in green. Um, um, between the balusters, um, but, um, but that is the, the impact. Um, and then this is the garage door as it, door system as it was approved. With the replacement doors and the twenty inch brick pier, and this is the same garage and the same doors and the same lintel. Just with a, um, the widening of the doors to, um, to eight foot eight each. Um. And we, and then here, we've, we've created a, a photo montage, sorry, this computer's jumping around. This is the existing condition, where, where you actually see the AC units and that, and that, um, hatch. Um, what was approved was to remove all of that and extend, you know, heal the rail. This is what it would look like when that copper eventually patina's in green, um, and again, you know, the. Initially, it turns sort of a darkish brown, and then over twenty years, it'll probably turn that color. Um, and then this, these are a, a, a rendering of the, this is the existing condition with the garage doors, and this is the proposed condition with that twelve inch brick pier. Uh, again, the lentils would be the same, uh, and then the garage doors are being replaced in this, in this rendering, uh, as approved, just again, just wider. Um, and that's it.
Alright, commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, please.
How are you proposing? To cut the brick back four inches, by what method, uh, and what's, the, my con- my concern is, what's left exposed when you cut? A whole column of bricks, flack, four inches? You're gonna do that four times?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll have to unweave the veneer course, um, you know, to, to, to do that, you'll have to un, unweave two courses. Um, you know, both the backup course and, and then, um, and then reinstall the, that, that, those bricks. So you'll have, essentially, you'll take the old bricks that are there, we'll take them apart. Um, we have to take the lintel out anyway, so we're sort of unraveling the masonry opening. And they'll just remove the bricks and reinstall them, uh, so you have a finished end on the brick.
Mr. Grassi. Why? Why not remove, this is, this is, you, as you explained, this is not historic, this is nineteen fifties or something?
Yes.
Why not take the pier out altogether and leave the sidewalls alone and put a continuous lintel in? You're gonna replace the lentils, why, why, why not clear-span it?
Uh, that would be great, we would, we would be happy to do that, um, and, and, and leave the, leave the opening from here to here as it is. And just remove this, and, you know, we put a Wiffland steel beam in behind it to support the lintel.
Yeah, why, why don't, why, why, why aren't you proposing that?
Um, uh, because I think historically, you know, these, this, this is. This, this structure was designed to look as if it were a somewhat old carriage house, kind of. And the intent was to have sort of carriage house style doors, although they put in a, sort of a modern overhead door with raised panels on it, so it wasn't really a good trick.
Yep. Well, that was the, that was the intent, we found that in pre- previous, uh, discussions, that we wanted these to kind of mimic carriage house doors, and we would have never seen a carriage house door that would be the full length. I think that was the idea there.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that was our thought was.
It would look too odd and suburban if it was eighteen feet.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be acceptable commission to, 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 to do that, it would be easier to drive in and out for sure, you know, and, and, and make that work, but, um. But yeah, I think that's, that, that was the, that was our concern, that, that we just would, wouldn't be approvable.
But you said it wasn't historic, even though people use the word historic.
Correct, yeah, it's a nineteen fifties garage.
Nick, what, what, what? Is supposed to replicate it in some way, is that what you want?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's following the language, what you see up and down the street, which would be carriage house or, um, I think this was, um, referred to as like a kitchen street, where all the, the, um, staff would use. Um, so it's just following that language up and down the street. Uh, but yes, this property, this, uh, garage, well, I found the building permit when I was doing my research, yeah, you can see it here, um, this was built in the fifties, so this was originally just a garden wall.
Alright.
And Nick, it looks like your recommendations were generally supportive of what's as presented today, including the. The reuse of the materials on the front steps and railing.
Yeah, yeah.
Possible, right?
Be- because this building, the garage was built in the fifties, um, uh, I think this is appropriate, um, with the understanding that this is not a historic, uh, property. And that there have been instances where we have approved the widening of a door, but in those instances, it was typically, um, for a nonhistoric opening. Um, and I would just recommend that if the commission does approve the expansion of the door, um, just to include that language, so it's understood for precedent setting.
Any other? Comments or thoughts on the garage door? Okay.
None for me.
Alright, moving on to the headhouse. Any comments on that, any? I will say that it works for me, but I'm not the only person here. Is it, does it work for others? Is there a different opinion? Okay.
I wasn't troubled by it, given its low profile behind the railing.
Exactly. Um. Well, intrusive at all, okay, with that said or with that not said, let's move on to public comments, please raise your hand.
A- Arian, if, if you could just circle back to the front, the front for a second, and maybe discuss some of the details of the railing. Um, it would be my recommendation to, uh, retain as much of the original, um, uh, materials as possible, uh, as we know. This type of granite, I think it's probably Quincy granite, I ha- I can't see it, but it's very difficult to replicate because that quarry doesn't, um, operate anymore, so. That, and then a- as much of the material on the handrail, um, as possible, and, um, just. It, it does appear that this is an, an original handrail, so I would just recommend keeping as much as possible, if some of the, um, the posts have to be replaced, I think that's fine. I think the big details will be the granite slabs and the handrail itself.
So that's my part of his presentation, so from what I understood, he was saying that he is going to, so we'll, we will, we'll just reiterate that then.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, assuming that's what the application states, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, and particularly like the boot scraper, I think is fantastic, so you, you know, but I, that. Maybe it goes without saying, but I think something like that, the kind of detail that you really wanna preserve if at all possible.
So. I would normally think that we would have that kind of conversation after the public, uh, comments, but certainly. Again, he, in his presentation, he did say that he is going to, uh, reuse the material, um, as much as possible, and that's something that definitely we would want as well. Um, anyone else? Alright, public comments, let's go for it. Uh, I see Holland was just raised there.
Okay, uh, Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, we do not oppose the restoration of the front treads as long as the work satisfies guideline A two, which requires the work be necessary. And materials used match existing materials in composition, design, color, texture, and other visible qualities. We oppose the garage door alteration as it does not satisfy guideline A seven, which does not allow changes to be made to existing window and door openings unless restoring a documented original feature. And the nineteen fifty-nine permit shows the doors to already be ten feet wide by seven feet tall, which is a modern standard dimension. We oppose the new elevator override as it is visible from a public way and thus does not satisfy guideline C four, and alters the roof line, which does not satisfy guideline C one. Thank you.
Okay, Arian, I'm not seeing any other public comment for this application, so we can close it up.
Alright, yeah, closing public comments, okay. Do we wanna get to more details about the stairs, or are we in agreement that this is gonna be material that's going to be reused? And? We're all agreeing with that, that is something that Guy did put in his, uh, presentation.
Well, I guess I would ask, Nick, you, in a practical matter, i- do you typically set some sort of a threshold, because at this point, it be, it would become, you know, a best efforts or. You know, an objective or a subjective, I s- I guess, judgment by the tradesman as to what's salvageable and what's not, so it, do you? Normally set some sort of a threshold of some percentage, for instance, of the balusters are gonna disappear, is that where you would want a consultation and be called in to assess the, uh. Uh, the approach, rather than, because we could say, you know, best, if Guy says, you know, we'll save as much as we can, but then it's sort of, it becomes a very subjective, uh, aspect as to what is salvageable, right? It's like our window conversations all the time.
Yeah, I think we should, I, I don't think, um, Guy knows right now which ones all need to be replaced, so let's, let's just, um, recommend that he check in with me when the time comes and everything's being removed, and we can. We can go from there, um, but if they're, if they're deteriorated, they're deteriorated, but I'd just like to see some documentation of that, because, um. Um, I think this is a really special property, we wanna retain the, as much original material as possible, so.
Yeah, and we can, we can do that, we can, we can show you, you know, when we take it apart, we can show you what it looks like, you know, what we've, what we found. The, the one thing we have a concern with is like the end of this tread. And the end of that tread.
Spalling?
Yeah, they're kind of crumbling, I mean, I'm assuming we can reuse the tread, and we'll end up having to patch that with some kind of, a, a, a good craftsman to do some kind of an epoxy patch. Um, that will last, um, and that's all because of the, you know, the water getting, spalling those.
Is there an opportunity to flip it? If the underside is finished?
You know, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
It's the same dimension, right, so you might give you that opportunity.
The question is, is it finished on all sides and all that stuff, but, but it's possible, right, so we just don't know until we take it all apart and we have a pile of pieces and. You know, can figure it out, but we can engage, um, with Nick and, at that point, once we have it apart and we know what the proposal is, and show them exactly what we're gonna replace and not.
Actually, the quest, the stair adjacent to it. As you see the. It, it, it looks. I- isn't it the same material, it looks like it's new and different.
It's been cleaned.
Been cleaned.
So it's a little shinier and brighter. So this, you know, we would do the same thing, we would clean it in the restoration process. And and hopefully they, they, they come closer together in color. But it's also not quite as has sagged as badly for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so.
Next.
Yes, exactly next, the doors, the garage doors. It is a nineteen fifty's design. I am normally not a fan, as you guys well know. Of. Messing with openings at all. In this case. I'm not really having trouble with it. If this was a resounding no from the group, I would support it. So I, I, I'm not married to the idea, but. I'm not finding an issue with something. So simple.
I would like to ask. In relation to what you're saying. What is the existing width of the door?
Um, didn't they say that was ten?
Well, the building permit said ten, but the plan drawings from. Mr. Grassi show eight. It, it is. Was it originally ten and maybe it was cut down to eight and now we're just reverting, it's an interesting conundrum, right? It, it may have been a single seven by ten door originally. And and then somebody did this over, you know, even later than nineteen fifty nine, I don't know, but they are eight feet wide.
Now, tell me, wh- why, why can't someone drive a car in there in an eight foot wide opening? You told me because of rear view mirrors?
Depends how big your car is.
Yeah, a lot of cars are actually eight feet, mirror to mirror. You'd be surprised.
Like he's got an X five.
I mean, it's, it's, and and you're also making a very sharp turn out of a narrow alley to get your car in there, so it's difficult to get the car ninety degrees to the.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
It's just, it's, it's, it's really, and you know, trust me, they, they really don't want to have to do all this, but. It's just very difficult to get your car in and out, you end up making like.
Get a Mini.
That would be easier.
Mini for twelve years, it was great.
Not our purview, Mo.
We, we would never.
Car is not visible.
We would never propose an eight foot wide garage door, I mean, nine feet is sort of a minimum standard, you know. For a garage door, especially e- even when you don't have a, a ninety degree turn to make to get into it.
Alright, sorry, I don't mean to delay the process.
You know what the interesting thing is, if you're saying that it's now at eight feet. And plans say that it was originally at ten. This is you restoring back to the original idea.
Well, I think it was a single ten foot wide, as I read this more carefully, and I don't know if civic association. Comments were specific. They, they, they have a, an image of the, of the original. Permit. And I think it implies it was a single door ten feet wide, and then at some point it became the, the two eight footers, so. My whole comment about, oh, there maybe there were two ten footers. I think is, is incorrect.
Uh huh, okay.
And that would be great if they were ten. But at some point, I think it was, it was, I would bet it was a single door ten foot wide, and at some point in the last sixty years, it got expanded.
What's that big lintel on four inches of? Brick?
Well, the, the lintel's actually supported on steel. Um, it's just visually it's supported on.
It's just decorative.
Yeah, the steel's what's failed and and caused the lentils to sag and crack.
Alright, so.
Any other public comments, or did we get past that, I think?
Yeah, we already got past that.
It's one of, um.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna show everybody something fun. As to why we're being so sensitive about this property, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna share my screen. So I think we know who this is.
It was a stable.
Yeah, if, if you look right here, you can see this little dimple right here, right? And then. If you look right here. You can see that the dimple is right there, so like Teddy Roosevelt touched this step, so I think that's, that's kind of like a little. Fun part about. Why we're doing what we're doing, so.
I mean, we got a little history. A president walked down those steps.
Yeah, so that's why we're being so sensitive for little moments like that.
Right. Right, it's a fantastic block, right, that whole stretch. Is worthy of the deliberation.
It definitely is.
Okay.
Alright. Anybody wanna make a motion, or does anybody have a different opinion? Please, don't be shy, if you have something to say, please say it. Okay. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application as submitted. With the proviso that the materials in the front stoop are. Salvaged and repurposed and reused, not repurposed, but reused to the greatest extent possible.
Into checking with staff.
And yes, and 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 consult with staff, you know, if, if that is seen as impractical or difficult.
Second.
Alright. Is the seconded? Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner Fleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Finkel.
Aye.
So thrilled.
Aye.
Commissioner Steel, aye. Uh, this has been approved, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate you, we appreciate the deliberation, I agree with you about the block, it's really a special, special building and a special block.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going on to fifty five Phillips Street. Do we have anyone here for fifty five Phillips Street? Please raise your hand.
That's, that's, uh, where is he, that's Frank.
Frank, yeah.
Where is he?
Frank, here, there he is. Hello, Frank.
Hello, Frank.
Oh, what good. Excellent, uh, nice to see you all. So this is an unusual situation, I know that. Uh, Nick has the graphics, they're quite minimal compared to some of the things you've seen, because this is a pretty minimal little thing. This is a, a, an old storefront on the corner, Phillips and. Anderson, and. It was originally a retail space at some point. And over the years, it has been up, and up until just very recently. It was an exercise studio that the, the, where you see those pale blue green shutters on the right. That is the location we're talking about. The, the situation is that the owner of the space wants to convert it to residential. And for that reason, he has placed shutters inside behind the glass. There's a glass facade on this that was approved by the commission, which is essentially large, single panes with a fairly thin frame. And. The problem that he ran into. There is the owner, I know he's on here somewhere, he runs, he runs a physical fitness studio on Cambridge Street. He is staring with despair at the condition. Because. The. City Fire Department said you need a second means of egress. And even though it's ground floor, I mean, it's a, it's an efficiency apartment, a studio. It has this single door that goes directly to the street. The city was adamant that he needs to have a secondary means of, of. A path of escape, it doesn't have to be a full blown egress, but he has to have. A path of escape, and the suggestion was made that he should make one of those panes. Operable. So the concern that we had obviously was that. There was some detailing required to make it operable without violating the sightlines and the character of what's there now that was approved. So. The documents that Nick has will show that we brought in. A specialist iron worker and a, and a specialist contractor. To see if we could in fact make this work. And the, the documents that Nick has would indicate how we're gonna do that. Essentially, what we're doing is hinging. One of the panels, the, the one on the extreme right. To the right where there is a substantial bit of framing and masonry that can operate and bear the weight of the glass. And that the window swings in. Not out. Because that's a secondary means of egress, it doesn't need to swing in. I mean, it needs to swing out, it can swing in. So the objective is to retain the two inch framing sightline that exists. And to simply take the second pane of glass and retract it. Uh, approximately. Half an inch. So that there will be a slight distance between the two panes, less than, less than, than a quarter of an inch. But that will allow the door to swing in. To a degree that will satisfy the egress calculations from the fire department. And, and as you can see, there's hinging on the right hand side that bites into substantial building material. So that this gets, uh, the, our client out of his dilemma and it can become a studio apartment. That's. This is the extreme other end of Guy's presentation, this is a tiny little thing, but for the person who's trying to make. The unit work, it's a, it's a big deal, so. That's my presentation and I'm open to questions.
Okay, commissioners, what are your questions on this one? Do you have questions on this one, it seems cut and dry. It's gonna, you know, if you convert that into. A door, not because you want to, but because the, the fire department is telling you that you need to do this. And you make it swim inward. So when it's closed, it just looks normal, right?
Exactly, the whole idea was to preserve the sightlines of what you've already approved. And, and so that it, this is never going to open, except it, at that terrible moment when it would really be necessary. And so we understand BFD's position clearly. But it seemed to us that, uh, this is not something that's gonna be part of a, a regular operating. Situation, it's, it's a, a way to offer safety and compliance to the, the. Tenant or ultimate owner of this little efficiency apartment.
Are you going to secure it?
The question of how it would be secured, it's, it's, as you can see, the inside face on the left hand side, as you look at this. There's a whole series of interior hardware that, that. It has to comply with ease of operation, it can't be a, a secure lock with a key. I mean, obviously, that's honored only in the breach all over Beacon Hill, but. Once this was. Approved by you all, we would then investigate what exact locking system we could put. On the face on the inside that would allow for. Relative ease of, of opening, so that if you needed to open it, you could open it. As you all know, the battle between life, safety and security is an endless war. And, and it's centered on windows and doors, but there are a number of, of. Fairly sophisticated and also some fairly simple minded ways of securing it on the inside face.
On practical purposes.
Yeah, and, and the whole idea was there was nothing on the outside face, no hinges, no lock, no other hardware. Other than what is there today as a, as a frame.
Is there any ability to reuse the glass or would that all be?
We can't really hear you, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that wasn't helpful. I was just commenting one at first, that, well, with all that hardware on the inside, it really is, is immaterial to us, I guess. How it's secured, other than it is secured, that's, that's for you guys to determine, since it's indoors. But more to the point, are you reusing the glass that's there now or that'd all be net new?
The contractor that we've engaged to look at this said that he would do two things, first, he would work with the. These were, were custom made pieces, and so the glass guy says that he may be able to. Adjust and save the existing pane. It's a pretty standard glass, it's not, it, it complies with all of our normal guidelines, in other words, it's not. It's not some kind of low E or other, other specialized glass, it's plain clear float glass. It's obviously a thermopane. Glass light. But, uh, we don't think that there's any difficulty in achieving the same character, even if we did have to rip. To bring in a new, a new piece of glass, we're not yet sure whether we have to or not.
And so presumably the spacer that there now is compliant. In terms of the, the color and all of that.
Well, yeah, all of that, everything that's out on the exterior is what was previously approved by the commission.
Right, that's what I thought. Great, thanks.
How many square feet is the unit?
I think it's about. Four hundred, I don't have, maybe a slightly less, it was originally an exercise studio. Yeah, and so it's, it's not very big, it has a little kitchen and a, a little bathroom and, and a. Uh, and a kind of living, sleeping area, it's, it's quite small. We investigated whether or not we could escape the du- the dual means of egress with ISD. But, uh, we were unsuccessful in that matter, they, they said, no, we, we want. A second way out of this, a secondary means of egress, the window was the only thing that was on offer.
Alright, any other questions? Commissioners. Alright, let's go ahead and open up comments to the public. And we've got Holland's hand already.
Okay, Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, we do not oppose this application as submitted, the proposed work satisfies guideline D one, as it duplicates the material and style with no changes in dimension to jam or sash. And modifications to add operating hardware are concealed. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, not seeing any other public comment, Arian, so back to you.
We have closed the public comments. Alright, commissioners. It looks like we're pretty much in agreement, but I don't want to assume anything. Does anyone have a difference in opinion? Alright. I motion that we approve. Oh, as submitted. Is anyone gonna second that motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. Alright, moving forward. Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner Fleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Finkel.
Oh, I think the whole requirement is absurd, but I vote aye.
Commissioner Givens.
We're in agreement.
And Commissioner Steel.
Aye. You're lucky you weren't in the coconut grove.
Yeah. You do, you wouldn't want to have this in your paperwork if anything ever happened.
Yeah.
So we are approved.
Thank you so much.
You are more than welcome.
We appreciate it.
And don't go anywhere, Frank, you're next to get.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not leaving, I, I won't go.
No, he won't go, we have thirty five.
Th- th- these two are, these two vast projects that I brought before you. But I mean, just a little bit of a, of a preliminary talk about this. My, my take on the door question is always to ask a potential client to go for a walk. Around the hill to look at houses of the period. And look at, at doors that are of the period. And look at the colors of those doors before some. More, uh, let's say idiosyncratic door. door color uh appears. And so the the change here is is pretty simple in that uh, the door that you're seeing is on West Cedar. And the new owners would like to have a door uh of that color on uh Thirty-Five South Russell. The door is not being replaced. The door is being re-conditioned and repainted. It's uh, we're not no new door, no new hardware, just the color.
Right. And that's the whole presentation.
I think this is perfectly fine.
I think it's perfectly fine as well. And not to mention, rather stylish. Um do any other commissioners have an opinion about?
No, it's fine.
All right, we can't vote yet, but let us move forward with public comments. Hello, Holland.
Go ahead, Aunt.
I will not hold you up. We do not oppose this application as submitted as the proposed red color is historically appropriate and satisfies guideline G1. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on the public comments?
None.
Um, we're gonna close public comments and move onward with our commissioners. So does anyone want to make a motion since it sounds like wrong of bringing?
I have a, I have a question for Nick for before the motion.
Okay.
Why isn't this reviewed in administrative review?
It's a color change. Um, so door color changes are ones, are items that we like to review by the commission. Um, unless there's a broad consensus um with some parameters, um, I I've been, this is the way we've been doing it. So um, happy to swap it out, but yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Our motion has been, uh, motion seconded. Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner Flack?
Aye.
Commissioner Fango?
Aye.
Commissioner Given?
Aye.
The Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Aye, this has been approved. Motion approved. Thank you so much, Frank. Have fun painting.
You have listed a huge weight from our shoulders. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Granary burial ground. Now, I don't know, I don't know if I should recuse myself because.
No, you don't have to, Arian.
So even though I'm I'm connected to Park Street Church?
Oh, you're connected to Park Street Church?
That's what I'm saying. I think I should probably recuse myself.
Okay, what, just to be safe, why don't we have you recuse yourself? Ed, you want to take the wheel here?
Um, certainly.
All right.
I'll need some coaching, but I'm happy to give it a go.
You know what you're doing. All right. Um, so we have um some representatives. We have Josh and we have Don. Um, gentlemen, I have the presentation that Kelly sent me. Um, if you want, if you want me to, yes, yes, yes.
I I can't, by Zoom, I'm at home and the Zoom, for some reason, it has my husband's name and I don't know how to change it. So this is Kelly Thomas, but I'm not.
All right.
There's Don and what have you done with him?
He's downstairs watching TV.
Handcuffed in the basement.
Yeah.
Good, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so commissioners, I asked Kelly to come. Um, we we, Kelly works with the Parks Department. She her team does wonderful work with the park, but uh, this is a very, uh, as I say, with all of our properties, this is a very important and special space. Um, and I thought it would be beneficial for you to kind of see what they're doing, the methods that they're using, um, since it's very high profile. So um, Kelly, I have your presentation. It's just tell me to change the um slides. We don't have to go through every single slide. I think you did a pretty comprehensive thing here, but um, you know, uh, do your thing.
Okay, I was just gonna read off the the slides, if that's okay. I mean, and um, can you either, can I, can you either go to my desk? Oh, wait, now can you do it or? Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just let me know when you change a slide. Yeah.
I'll just go like that.
Okay.
Um, so this is, I am Kelly Thomas and I work for the Boston Parks Department and I manage the Historic Bearing Grounds Initiative, which is a program within the Parks Department, which manages the city's sixteen historic bearing grounds. Um, so um, this project is for conservation of gravestones in the granary bearing ground. Um, there's a photo um just of the front. Um so the scope of work specifically is cleaning and repairs on three large monuments. Um, the Hancock Monument, which um you have them, do you, there's a map? Does people, do people have the map?
They should have the map, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So it's indicated on the map. Um, so the um, the Hancock Monument, the Mosley Monument, which is right next to the Hancock Monument. He's not well-known, but it's a bigger monument, so it's marble. Um, and then, of course, the Franklin Monument in the center of the site. Um, also, we're going to do conservation of one hundred gravestones in Section A. So there's about five hundred gravestones in Section A. If you're facing the site, um, it's the front left quadrant. It's the blue area on the map. And then in that same area of Section A, we're going to do cleaning and resetting of all of the gravestones. Um, and one of the things that um we always look for um with the contractor who does the work is to respect the Secretary of the Interior Standards for our treatment of historic properties. Specifically, we look at preservation of cultural landscapes. Um, so, you know, we identify, retain and preserve historic materials and features. That's pretty obvious. Um, repair, so stabilize, consolidate and conserve. Those words are used all the time in the conservation. Those are the three things that we do um, of the historic materials and features. Um, here is the Hancock Monument. Um, as you can see, it's really dirty. Um, so we want to just clean the monument. And then at the bottom where it connects to the base, we want to repoint that. Um, so then next is the Mosley Monument, which is right next to it. So this one's made of marble, so clean, consolidate, which is to kind of preserve, it's a treatment that kind of preserves in the the matrix of the grains and the the stone. And then there's a broken piece of the plinth on the back of the monument, which we're gonna um repair. Um So you can see in the back, kind of the lower right-hand corner, you can see it's cracked there. So reattach that. And here, it looks a lot dirtier. I don't know if it's the light or I suspect maybe it's the weather. Maybe it'd been raining a lot, but you can see it really needs to be cleaned. Um, and then finally, we go to the Franklin Monument. Um, so we're gonna clean the granite, repatinate the bronze plaque and the letterings on the front, and then repoint the monument sections. It's done like in tiers. Um, but you can see how dirty that is. And um there's another picture. Um, you can see that it's dirty. Um, so then we go on to the conservation, so conserve a hundred gravestones and then clean and reset all the gravestones in Section A. So I have a few photos just following of general, oh, wait, clean and reset. Okay, so um, one thing about these stones, there's a bunch of linden trees in the front. And so they, there's aphids that live on them and they secrete this um sap. And it lands on the gravestones and it's like a sticky mess and it attracts dirt and stuff. And lichens also grow abundantly on the gravestones and many gravestones have become illegible. Um So these are just some general section. This is general views of Section A. Um, there's just, I think there's four of them. So you can see, um like there's, continue on. There, once again, the colder ones there. This one right here is a good one. Wait, go back. No, this one. Like you can see, the stone is in excellent condition, but you can't even read it because there's so much stuff that's growing on it. And we we use it with gentle, a gentle cleaner. Um, it's this, you know, it's a conservator, Daedalus Incorporated, the art conservator that many of you know. We've hired to do this work. So it's very gentle, but you'll be able to read them afterwards. And that's the reason a lot of people go to the granary. Lots of genealogists and history buffs. Um, gravestone conservation, we frequently, with all these old slate markers, we frequently treat the same project problems because of the the way it's geologically formed and cut and carved. So the cert, those conditions we usually treat are surface delamination of less than three meters. So the delamination is just a peeling off of the layer. So it can be either less, the layer can be less than three millimeters, can be greater than three millimeters. Often, that's cleaving. Um, like, that's why it was used for roof tile slate because it cleaves so easily. There can be parts of the gravestone that are broken and lost. Can be broken in several pieces and also insufficient support. If you imagine my hand is like a a gravestone, there's a section beneath ground and frequently it breaks. The gravestones have broken right there. And so they've been reset, so they'll stand up. But you only see the top carving and maybe here lies. But you don't know, you know, who is lying there or when they died or, um, and all the information is below ground, so we fit, we can fix that. There's some photos of how that's done. Um, so here's a, here's a stone that has some surface delamination. You can see those kind of splotchy things in the center. It's actually fine layers of the stone that's peeling off. So it's usually on the front or the back of stone, the stone. And it can take the entire epitaph off of the stone. Um, and so the way that's treated is um, the, the next slide, you can see how we treat. So you can see, this is done in a studio, so it's a controlled atmosphere. The stone's thoroughly clean. There's no dust. There's no insects. There's no pollen. There's no anything in there. And he's using a a needle and he injects, um, this is acryloid B seventy-two, which is a reversible, um not glue, but it 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 clues, it sticks things together, adhesive. And so they're using, to get into those fine areas, they use a needle. Um, and then the next slide, you can see, um, they seal the edges with a special um custom mortar mix to, the water is the enemy. That's the thing. You want to keep the water out because of the the freeze and thaw is what continues to spall it off. So that's how that particular problem is treated. And the next side, we see the uh delamination of greater than three millimeters. And those, those, those sections, those valleys trap, once again, dirt and degree, dirt and debris. And water collects in there and exacerbates the delamination through freezing and thawing. And the next slide shows, if you look, this is the same gravestone looking from the top. If this continues, the front, the thin front layer is where the epitaph is. All that's gonna, to spall off, it'll be lost. Um, so the treatment for that is similar, um, except with the bigger sections, if you see. Um, then the next slide here, we're using um an Akimi Acapox um epoxy. There's various, you know, versions of that and they have different viscosity and um so it it adheres, it adheres the parts together. Um, and then um then they're clamped together, you can see, to let it cure. So this is another reason we like to have it done in the studio because you can control the temperature to to make sure it cures correctly. If you're outside, you have a wide, a wide variation in climatic conditions, which can affect that. Um, so the next slide, oh, and then any gaps or edges are sealed with a custom mortar mix. So you can't see the, like, the epoxy has like kind of a shiny artificial quality. But the the special mortar mix is tinted and it it resembles the stone. It looks much more natural. Um, so the repair doesn't stick out. And that's one of the things we say, if it's a successful repair, when you go in the site, you don't notice, oh, that stone's been repaired. You just notice you probably notice the ones that haven't been repaired. Sometimes it's kind of frustrating because we don't want to make it brand new. We're not trying to make it shiny. We're not trying to make it perfect. We're trying to stabilize it and save it for future generations. Um, and the next slide. So losses and breaks. So these are actual stones in the granary. So you can see it's broken. And at the top section, it looks like there's some missing pieces. Um, so the conservator will kind of dig around stones just a little bit because sometimes you can find the pieces that have fallen off. And you can take them and you can save them and readhere them. Um, but the repair for this is similar to the, on the next slide, the use the uh Acapox, but it's a different number, so it's a um different, slightly different pros- um, properties, but um so it's this, when it's just a, when it's the vertical section or when it's just like cleaved sections, this one is just glued together, literally. Um, and then if you go to the next slide, this, this is a, this one was from Cops Hill Bearing Ground where we did a project recently. And you can see, this is broken into a lot of pieces. But there's no, there's no like mechanical like the the pieces, they'd be glued together and then, but there's no mechanical ledge or anything to keep it from sliding down other than a an epoxy. So we put some tiny fiberglass pins in um to keep it to keep it from sliding. Um, so you can see on the the tape, um, this is during the work of this gravestone that um how it's being done. And then in the next slide, this is an after section. Um, so the stones are, the stone sections are joined with the Acapox. Um, the small gaps are filled with a custom mar- mortar repair. And in the upper right-hand corner, you can see a larger dimensional loss. We've made a patch there. Um just because, like in the upper left-hand corner, there's a missing piece, but we didn't make a patch because it's not structural. It doesn't support any parts of the stone. But here, it kind of supports the top bit. And also you, there's, it's an open seam. It's like a valley that can trap water in there. Um, so that's why we do that. Um, but that's, yeah.
How old are these generally?
Um, I would say mostly from the seventeen hundreds, but there's some from the sixteen hundreds and some from the early eighteen hundreds. But the biggest period would be the seventeen hundreds. There's not that many gravestones. Not, like, not everyone has a gravestone or had a gravestone. Less so in the sixteen hundreds. Um, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, oh, wait, so this is an example of a stone that broke off. Um, and it was set low. So you can see, you can see the the skull on top, and you could probably read the the first line. It says something like here lieth or something like that, but you don't know who's there. Um, and sometimes the pieces are flat on the ground and sometimes they're set like this. So what we do, um, in the next slide, um is we put some some pins in there, fiberglass pins. Um, and that's inside a wooden form like that. So when the edge is jagged like this, um, we use cast stone. Um, you'll see, um, like a base of cast stone that's inserted on those pins and and glued there in place. So that's like the finished product. So the cast stone is below ground, but then we can raise it up so you can read the epitaph. And if the break is straight across, instead of jagged, sometimes we use natural stone. Um, but um, so that's it for that. Um, I think there. So those, the in-studio and treatment details, I took them from a report. We have a, we always have a final treatment report. So this is from the final treatment report for gravestone conservation, Cops Hill Bearing Ground, done by, in twenty twenty-three by Daedalus. And we are pleased to announce that we won a preservation achievement award from the Boston Preservation Alliance for that project. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Uh, Commissioner, also turn it over to you again. I just wanted to highlight some of the work that Kelly's team is working on. Um, so uh, questions, comments, concerns? And I do believe that she has some of the um, uh, the conservation staff here, right, Kelly?
Yes, that's right. Josh Crane is the the president and the head conservator from Daedalus. Um
So if we need some detail, we can maybe um, uh, refer to Josh if
Yes, that's correct.
Commission or the public has some questions. Great.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Kelly. Uh, so commissioners, with that, um, I will turn it over to you. Okay.
I'll just say, Kelly, thank you to you and the team for this this work. It's uh tremendous.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. I love it.
Is the intent, as I look at the map, is the intent eventually? And, you know, funds, staffing, bandwidth, all that to to do the other? and, you know, funds, staffing, bandwidth, all that to, to do the other three sections at some point in the future?
Yes. We did that in phases at Cops Hill Bearing Ground. Um, and that's, it looks, it looks wonderful. Um, that this is, yeah, so the blue section is section A. Um, so I'd like to do, you know, all of the sections. Um, but it's, you know, kind of timed. Um, like I said, yeah. It's not like there's like a huge group of contractors who are out there working on seventeenth and eighteenth century gravestones. It's, uh,
Right. Oh, thank you. So Nick, is this something that's in our purview to, to adjudicate or is this mostly informant, information only?
Nope, this is in your purview. Yeah. Um, uh, so this entire property is within the, um, the, the district. So, uh, you do, yeah.
So, uh, Commissioners, any, any other comments or questions, um, Kelly, before we open up to public comment?
I think Daedalus is a good group that's, that know what they're doing.
Great. Uh, Nick, do we have public comment on this particular application?
I do believe we do. Um, let's see. Um, first up we have is Holland. Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. We do not oppose this application as submitted. As circumstances warrant, exception to guideline B one, which discourages cleaning of masonry unless necessary to halt deterioration. We would note the application example given was for Westerly Barely Bearing Ground, which may or may not have similar conditions to the historic district or applicable guidelines for work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Holland. And, um, I don't see any other comments. Rochelle, did you have comments? I know you were excited about this. No? No? Okay.
And just to be clear, Josh is a member of the team, correct?
Yes, he's, we've already hired him as, as, yes.
Good. I just saw his hand up. I didn't want him to feel left out. Good. Rochelle, do you raise your hand if you'd like to chime in, please?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the best practices for not, um, hitting rods into slate and that if the ground is more soggy and like damp, that it's better to use gravel and not concrete with foundation base for those gravestones.
I think that where we use the concrete, that's not for setting. That's because the stone has broken off. And it can't be reset. You can't, because of the weight, that's, the bottom part has broken off. And the only way you can make it stand up is to sink it in the ground. And so you can't read the epitaph, which defeats the entire purpose of the gravestone.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, it's just you're taking the concrete and inserting into the dirt and you're not like working around it to set it with any like,
But it, it, it won't stay up in the gravel. It's physically impossible to do that. Those stones are extremely heavy. If you want to come lift some at my office, you, you don't realize how heavy they are. They, it won't, it'll fall. Gravel cannot retain that.
I, um, I did unmute Josh in case he has any insight into this process. So Josh, if you have any comments?
Yeah, sure. Sure, I can answer the question. I mean, so basically, wha- wha- what, what the picture shows and what Kelly's talking about is the, the stones that, that end up having to have a base put on the bottom of them, that as, as she noted, they wouldn't, they wouldn't sit properly in the, in the, in the ground. So you have to add something to the bottom that basically catches it. But they're just, they're reset back into the soil. It's basically just adding a piece to the, to the, to the slate and the reset back into the soil the same way that we'd reset any, any grade markers. So it's basically like making the grade marker whole and then resetting it into the ground.
But, and I think Rochelle's point was around stability. So it sounds like it, you make it long enough to have enough purchase so that you've got stability, regardless of the soil condition and the moisture.
Great.
I don't know if that addresses your concern, Rochelle, but it's a good, it's a good thing to bring up. So, thank you.
And, and Josh and Kelly, all of these methods, they're in line with the Secretary of Interior Standards, just to reiterate what you said at the beginning of the, the presentation?
Yes. Our goal is to preserve the headstones. That's our only goal. We've reached, we've tried other things. It's not like this is the first project we've done. Um, and so we've tried setting them without pins on them and they break and fall over. Um, so if your goal is to save the artifact, then you've got to give it stability at the base. Gravel does, all, all the gravestones are set in gravel. They were, but they all tip over.
Right.
It's, it's not.
Of course they do.
The ground moves underground. Like if Joe Bagley were here, he could explain also the, the way things. It's not, so, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. This is great. Um, does anyone wish to make a motion? Unless you have other questions, Commissioners.
I would, uh, I would, uh, make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Why don't you do a real call?
Yeah, vote. Yes, and I need to figure out my alphabetical order. Um, Commissioner Aaron's. Oh, she's abstaining. Um, I vote affirmative. Commissioner Fleck, Commissioner Given.
Hi.
Who else do we have? Uh, Commissioner Steele?
Hi.
Don't forget me.
And Commissioner Feingold?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes. You'll get a letter from Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly and Josh. We appreciate you coming by today.
Thanks for doing great work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've got one.
Arien, back to you. You're in control again. Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, one forty-seven Cambridge Street. Up next, do we have any answer? One forty-seven. I see Stanley. Stanley.
There he is. Okay.
Hi, y'all. How we doing today?
Good.
Um, we're here looking to replace ten existing, uh, windows to match the period style windows that we have here. I think it's a mixture of six over six and uh, I think, uh, another bunch of, uh, two over two. Um, but they're all to match existing double-hung wood windows in true divided light.
Stanley, I, I know we're having a, a somewhat different style of window here. Um, the, the guys from the window company aren't here today, are they?
They, he had a prior commitment, commitment and make it. Um, I do know that they, they did drop off, um, an example window to you guys.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll explain it the best way I can. So, um, just because I, um, uh, Mark and I had got a demo here, so I can explain it. And this is why this property is, um, under review because I wanted this to show the commission, uh, this kind of new type of replication window. So for background, uh, for those of you that don't know, this building is not a historic building. Um, it's, I think it's in historic interpretation of the original building, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, but this building was built in the nineteen nineties. So, um, we do have somewhat of a, uh, of a new uh, window, uh, for you to take a look at. That's not a traditional uh, window that we would see in terms of true divided light. And I think this would be a good case study for this type of window, uh, to see if this is something that we can approve, um, uh, in the future for windows that are able to be replaced. So this is from, um, a window company called The Cooper Group. Um, I don't know if any of you have ever worked with them. Um, but they are doing historic replications where they can modify the window to look like the historic window in the instances where we can replace windows that are too far deteriorated or have already been replaced. So we always want to retain the historic materials, but in the instances where we can replace them, um, we want to look at windows that match the, um, original profile as much as possible. So this is that window. Um, and I just want to get to the detail here. So, um, Stanley is correct that this is a true divided light window. Um, the exterior glass is a historic, um, style glass where it has the, on the types of waves that you would see for each of the specific periods, um, that they were constructed. And the difference is, and I want to get to the, um, yeah, here. So you see, um, the cross-section here, you see that this is a six over six style, six over six, I said, right? Um.
Two over two.
A two over two, sorry, thank you. Yeah. It's, it's both?
It's a mixture of both. There's some that's six over six and some that's two over two, depending on which, which, uh, elevations you guys are looking at.
Got it. Yes. So, uh, but just to show you this really interesting, um, setup here is, first, these are very heavy windows. They're actually hurricane rated, um, if I'm not mistaken, Stanley. Um, but the, um, you can see right here that it's six, for the six over six windows, there's six panes of glass. Um, and they're divided. Um, and then there's kind of an insulation panel here. And you, there's no gasket. So that's the kind of selling point for this product. Um, there's absolutely no gasket. And when you look at it, it looks like a true divided light window. Um, so, um, I think this is a really, um, interesting example. And I think this will be a really great case study because this is a new building to see if this would be applicable for other properties in the future in the district. Um, because it's a really beautiful window and it, it's probably the best, um, double glazed, um, glass that, um, looks like a single pane glass. And other than that, um, it's, it's a pretty, you know, it, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. So you can see the cross-section right here that they certainly are, um, true divided light windows. The, um, the mutton pattern and, uh, profile can be custom based on the type of window. Um, and I think this is a pretty great example. And I think this is a, uh, this building is, um, a good case study because it's not a historic building. So that's why I had Stanley come here to, uh, present. Um, and that is, uh, what we have for you here. Um, Stanley, if I'm not mistaken, there are several on the, the back that were being replaced. Those are the two over twos. And then there are a couple on the side, then the six over sixes. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Yep. Uh, and then once they're up, um, we can have you come take a look at them. But, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of where we are.
Is it wood?
It is wood. It's all wood. Yes.
All right. And do you have that sample?
Nick, I don't know, I don't know if Nick has it or he might have came back and took it, but I'm, I can ask if he could bring it back. Nick, do, do you still have that sample or, um?
Sample? I do, yeah. Um, so if, if we're, if we're kind of on the fence about these, we could do a subcommittee where I could show you the sample. Um, the subcommittee would also be open to the public. Um, so if the public had some doubts, they could also attend and provide their feedback. Um, but I think this is a really great example uh, of kind of the new technology that is, um, coming into the market here, um, despite tariffs. Um, so, yeah.
What?
Could, could you explain the energy panel concept, which I believe, Nick, you described as that piece that runs the full width of the sash, right?
So this is a really thin, thin piece of glass, um, that, um, would, it's kind of in place of the gasket. So it's, it's, it's thin and it's, it's between the individual panes of glass, if I'm not mistaken.
So the, so there's, the sandwich is three panes of glass thick.
Yes.
An outer, the large, middle, and then the inner.
Exactly, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
How would this be applied only to nonhistoric situations?
Say that again, Mo.
How would this particular version be applied to any window in the district or to only?
That would be, that would be the theory. I, I'm just saying that this, this property here is a good case study because it's a new construction building that's designed to look historic.
So there's, there's less at stake if we approve it. It doesn't necessarily set an overall precedent, but it does, you know, ratify, if you will, the newer technology for at least that purpose.
And, and, what, what state, please? What the, what's its advantage over an ordinary? Is one sheet of glass instead of multiple sheet, pieces of glass?
So it's, the advantages are, the exterior piece of glass is a historic glass. It, it, it's made to look historic depending on the period in which the building was built. And there's no gasket. So with the traditional window, replacement windows that we approve, you can see that gasket when you look in between the two panes of glass. This does not have that. Um, so it looks like a single pane glass window, which would be a historic configuration.
Would the added R value too?
I was gonna say, the R value must be significantly higher.
Well, you have three layers of glass. You essentially have three layers of glass. How are they adhered one to the other or are they just?
I believe they were like sort of fused together, but I defer to, um, unfortunately, he wasn't able to. It was prior, um.
I didn't hear you.
He said fused.
Correct.
Thank you. Good.
See, yeah, you can see that right here.
Must be, must be very heavy.
Yeah, very heavy. Yeah, the, the sample that I have in the office, uh, it, it's, it's a really, really heavy window. Um, but again, it's also, um, hurricane rated.
Right. I think another question for the manufacturer, Nick, at some point would be, since the muttons aren't structural, the inner, the centerpiece of glass is bearing the weight, then I suspect we have the potential for much narrower muttons when they're called for. Because today we run into that, right? We can't do, you know, knife-edge muttons because they don't have the structural integrity.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we are. So, um, we can approach this, um, you know, if we decide to move forward, of course, this is the commission's call, but, um, we can approach this where we would have a subcommittee where we can look at the sample. Um, unfortunately, because we're in a virtual setting, I, you know, it's not really, it doesn't really make sense for me to show you it. Um, or we can do a subcommittee to look at that sample. Um, or, um, we can approve this and, um, once the windows are installed, um, we can have, um, uh, Stanley let me know. And we can, uh, have a subcommittee where we would come out, um, and look at the windows and have a discussion. And, um, and the public would also be, uh, welcome to attend and participate in these conversations.
I would recommend, since this is a, that's a change from what we've been doing, to have a subcommittee look at the sample in the office.
Okay.
It's not, maybe the subcommittee to look at it when it's done too.
Yep.
And would that be at City Hall, Nick, or would you suggest doing it up on Cambridge Street?
Uh, we can do anything, whatever's easiest for your, for the commission.
And it, do you have one sash or do you have a whole, a whole unit?
I have one sash. Yeah.
Just a sash. Okay. But I think that would be indicative of, I think, give us a good sense of what it looks like in in reality.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and then in the interest for, um, of time for Stanley, if we do that, um, we do a subcommittee where we look at the window, I would also make a recommendation that we make a decision for Stanley um, at that subcommittee, um, so that he can move forward to his project because he's on a timeframe, uh, uh, a timeline also in terms of ordering these windows for the school.
Where do they come from?
The Cooper windows are from, uh, they're down in Connecticut. I'm not too sure where the, where he gets his glass panels from, but they're, uh, I forget, uh.
He's in Pawtucket. Yeah.
Are there other examples of the, of this installed somewhere else in the city of Washington?
He was actually not yet. Um, he's actually pushing this. Uh, this is sort of, uh, something that he, I'm not too sure if he developed it or not. Um, but this is something he's pushing currently. Um, but he has done a lot of historical windows in, uh, various cities, in various universities. That's how we found them. Um.
He done, he did a lot at Yale. Yeah, is what he told us.
Is there some aspect of it that makes it appealing to the educational market? Is the security or the, the windproof?
He's a fine craftsman who does windows and that's his, um, niche, uh, and he just gets a lot of the, uh, university products. Um, but he discovered this product, um, that he was able to integrate into, uh, into a historical, a historical window and, uh, is trying to push this product because it, I believe he said it doubles our value and it, uh, mimics or, you know, matches to the existing historical, uh, features of the existing windows.
All right. So, so Nick, I'm wondering, oh, is it echoing? I don't know why.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, so Nick, I'm wondering, since he's done things at Yale,
Hmm.
Is there like any picture where we see? Is there like any picture where we see something where his creation and an actual like. Original window to see how they look. You know, side by side. So we can get, you know, it's great, it sounds very exciting and very positive, I'm not mocking it, but it'd be great if we just. See an example, and I know we can't see everything, can't pick up. All details just by viewing it. But I I think that if we can see. An original window compared to what he's already done.
Yeah.
That would be. You know, if we can't tell the difference, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, I think. For that. Arian, I think the best. Thing to do would be to see the windows in person, I I don't think a graphic or an image would would suffice for that type of situation. I think. In those circumstances, I think looking at the window in real life, the sample window that we have. Would be would be best.
Alright, anybody else have any other questions?
One last thing, Nick, is any of it lowy or any of the three? Layers lowy or they all?
They have the. They have the option, but we because of our guidelines have requested that they're removed, so and they do have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
Alright, we are moving on to. Public comments. If you have a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom platform.
Okay, first up we have is Holland, Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. We do not oppose this application as proposed, provided the windows are demonstrated as being either beyond repair or nonhistoric satisfying guideline D one and utilized through grass. Through glass mountains satisfying guideline D five, the shop drawings provided do not show through glass mountains. Thank you.
Thank you, Holland, and I do not see any other public comment, so Arian, back to you.
Alright, we're closing public comments. Alright, I mean, I am. Almost excited about this idea. But it's not about me, my fellow commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I like the subcommittee idea. Get it, get our eyeballs on the actual product in real life and. And then coming out of that adjudicated as quick as we can to keep. Them project on track.
If they're heavy. How do you imagine lifting it to be able to open it? The double hung.
They 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 are double hung, yes.
Yeah, I know, but you you have a. Double the weight of the glass practically, have you not?
Yeah, I believe that they may be pressure mounted.
It's all the balance, I mean, they may have a mechanism that has a balance that that accounts for that, I don't think that's our concern, right?
Yeah.
Well.
So that's their decision whether they lift it. Leave them locked and fixed.
Sorry, I. I drift off into life safety. Issues which may not be the concern, direct concern of the commission, but I had. My customer. Go ahead, never mind.
So do we want to?
I'm puzzled.
Sounds like you're you're volunteering for the the subcommittee, Mo, we'd like to learn more.
Right.
Look, I I I I volunteer.
Alright, so in this case, Nick. Will this be more a matter of voting on getting a subcommittee?
Yes, so you'll vote, you'll vote for the subcommittee.
Motion to establish a subcommittee, is that something?
And then what the subcommittee will do, and then who will be up. Exactly, yeah, yep. And then what will happen is I will send out a poll tomorrow, get a date in very near future. And we'll have a demonstration for the window and see if it's appropriate for the locations that Stanley's proposing them for.
Has Chairman Keefe seen this yet?
Yes, he did, he was, he had several questions about the window, including. The question that we already answered in terms of having the profile of the mutton bars be customized according to the. Style appropriate for each individual property. So he he thought this was a very promising product. So I I'm assuming if we have a subcommittee. He'd love to come by and we can't include him as one of the deliberating members because he's not here to volunteer himself. But I'm sure he'll come to the subcommittee and participate.
Alright, so it moved forward for tonight. Do we want to ask who's for the subcommittee as far as who wants to be on it now? Or just? To see if we all are in agreement.
I mean, I think it's going to depend on the timing too. Is whether you could make that yourself available.
Yep. The the date is flexible. With the understanding that, you know, we want to be respectful of Stanley's schedule. But, you know, we could do it. We could do it next week, I just need to give, I need a forty eight hour notice to the public in terms of open meeting law requirements. So we could do it next week, we could do it the week after, it's. You know, it's it's all depending on your schedule.
Next week might be tough.
I'm sorry, Stan, I could barely hear.
Next week might be tough, given.
Yeah, because of the Fourth of July, yeah. But we could do it the following week.
Well, until you ask. Who's?
Yeah.
You're only trying to get three people, and then if you could do it Monday or Tuesday next week, then you might have a quorum for that. Depending on who who's invited, right?
Yep, exactly, so we, I think Mo had had volunteered himself, right, Mo?
Dude.
Okay, are there two other volunteers? It would only be like maybe a half hour, so it wouldn't be a big time commitment.
I'm I'm happy to try to do it as although I'm an alternate, so in when it comes to subcommittees, it might require Mark rather than myself, but. If it's helpful.
Where are we going to do, oh, you will tell us where we're going to do it.
Yeah, we, I think we could do it at, we could do it at one forty eight Cambridge Street, we could do it at City Hall. Whatever works best, I just have to notify the public where.
Right. It will be. One forty eight is appealing just because you'd also see. In situ, you know, where.
Yeah.
These are the windows we're talking about, right, I mean, there's a nice lever, you know, leverage the opportunity to see both the site and the the solution.
Okay, so we got Mo and Ed.
One, and is there anyone else who is? Able to be on the subcommittee? Are we talking about this week?
We'll send out a poll, not probably not next week, the week after.
Well, I would volunteer if it's a week after.
Okay.
Okay. We've got a core.
Okay. Make the motion, please.
Alright, I motion that we accept the. The quorum of three, that would be Commissioner Standing, Commissioner Fong and Commissioner Fleck. Do I get a second?
Is friendly amendment?
Sure.
I mean, to to establish a subcommittee to review the windows, I don't know, Nick, how specific does it have to be in terms of its mission?
Yes, thank you, yeah, so so. To establish a subcommittee in order to review a sample mockup and make a decision on this particular property based on this window.
Alright, amendment. Add it? Do we have a second for it?
Second.
Second, you guys. Commissioner Given, alright, Commissioner Allen, aye. Commissioner Fleck.
Aye.
Commissioner Fong.
Aye.
Commissioner Given.
Hi.
And Commissioner Stanley.
Bye.
Alright.
Alright, Stanley, you got promoted today.
Alright, Stanley, we'll we'll get you a subcommittee set up in the next two weeks. And then we'll have a decision for you at that subcommittee, okay, you'll be able to order the windows. After that meeting, depending on the outcome, okay?
Perfect, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you, Stanley, if you could just let the guys know at Cooper Group, if we could get, once we send out the get the dates. Maybe have them come and they can they can kind of explain it a little bit better than all of us could.
Yep, are you guys more of a morning thing or like a night thing?
It would probably be sometime during the workday.
Perfect, perfect, because I know that they're traveling. You know, I'm gonna get so perfect.
Yep, thank you, we'll we'll make it work, yeah, cool. Alright, thank you, Stanley, we'll be in touch shortly, I'll follow up tomorrow.
Alright. One twenty seven Mount Vernon Street.
And here's Catherine. Let me just fix my screen here. There we go, okay. Perfect. Okay, Catherine, I'm unmuting you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
And Nick, I think you have some slides.
Sure do.
Okay, thank you. I am Catherine Snyder, I'm pleased to be the CEO of Hill House, I know. Several people on this Zoom are familiar with the organization, for those who are not. Hill House is a nonprofit community center that was founded in nineteen sixty six, so much more recent than some of the histories we've been talking about. But very interesting history in that the organization was established by local residents to really serve as kind of a vibrant gathering place for children and families. Really focused on keeping. Families in the neighborhood and in Boston, kind of ensuring the livability of of Boston. And throughout the years, Hill House has played a critical role in building community through everything from recreation, education, cultural enrichment. In this past year alone, Hill House has served more than twenty five hundred participants through more than a hundred programs. So think of everything from enrichment programs like cooking and chess. Wide variety of art and music classes, breadth of sports, everything from soccer, girls' run club, fencing and tennis. And it's, as I've always told people, I am a mom of two sons, they are college age now, but I would have loved to have had a Hill House for those kids. To have everything taking place pretty much all under one roof. We do own and maintain a property at seventy four Joy Street, but the core of our programming really happens at the firehouse at one twenty seven Mount Vernon, as we call it, the firehouse. Which is at the corner of River Street. The firehouse was originally constructed in the late nineteen forties for the use of a municipal fire station. It was converted to its present use as Hill House's community center. Around two thousand and one. And operating as the heart and soul of Hill House, the building houses, everything from the art studio, classrooms and music room, three bathrooms, offices. Full kitchen, our main assembly room. So you can imagine a lot of activity under those in this two story building. Now, the last time the building was renovated was two thousand and one. I've joined Hill House only in December, so relatively new to the organization. But my predecessor commissioned a capital needs assessment. That took place this fall with onsite insight, we work with Rogerson communities, who I'm sure many of you know. They serve as kind of the property managers for this property as well as seventy four Joy Street. So they did the walkthrough with onsite insight. One of the year one recommendations, one of kind of the top of the list was the replacement of the wood flagpole that projects outward over the faux apparatus door. And you know, according to the report, and you can see it if you just take a look. This flagpole exhibits age related rot and deterioration. So after the. Snowfall and rains in Boston this year, as we were trying to figure out the kind of plans for next steps, we wanted to explore sustainable options. Something that would be a little bit more sustainable than the existing wood. Certainly, as a nonprofit profit, we're thinking about longevity. We want to make sure that whatever we're investing in is really going to last over the long term. So working with Rogerson. They identified McMahon Group, a construction company based in Boston to take a look at options. Which we presented and the idea being and understanding that there was precedent in the neighborhood. So installing a new custom four inch diameter, ten foot long tapered white aluminum flagpole. With the halyard and rigging, the new flagpole will be powder coated with a white finish to mimic what's currently there, although the the state of what's currently there is quite rotten. But really creating a much more sustainable option for this nonprofit. And so wanted to present that to all of you.
How old is the existing one?
We believe it dates to the original building, which would be around nineteen forty nine.
At one point, I thought you mentioned fiberglass, but it looks like. From the application, we're talking about aluminum, correct?
Correct, correct. Yeah, I think in exploring different options. And I I believe it was Rogerson said that there was precedent for aluminum in the neighborhood, and so. Thought that might be a good.
Powder coated or painted, because I know we do have a. Challenge keeping paint on aluminum and it tends to peel off in the neighborhood in various applications.
Yeah, McMahon was was suggesting powder coated.
I don't know, Nick, if you had an opinion on that, but I know. It can be unsightly if it starts to peel prematurely.
I mean, what's there, what's existing now, it's been around since nineteen forty nine?
It's wood, wood will hold.
Yeah, wood holds, wood, wood. Wood holds very well in this neighborhood, we have a lot of things. On that particular area, in that particular area. That's.
We. We have approved the conversion of a wood pole, a wood flagpole to aluminum on Beacon Street, I believe it was AMS. That we approved, so there is precedent for us doing this, and it is a material that we see in the neighborhood frequently. Uh, fiberglass would be another story, but they're not proposing fiberglass.
Right, I just wanted to be clear on that, so that's great, thank you.
Any opinions on this?
Well, I was also. Hoping you might be able to reuse the existing hardware, because there's a nice symmetry to it, and of course, it's the existing. Configuration with the both the bracket at the base and the. Supporting brackets coming in, and it looks like in the proposal, those are all switched out for new. Hardware.
Thank you, Ed, for bringing that up, one thing that that Nick did flag is the original mount is square. Yeah, and so certainly we said that's certainly an accommodation and we can make that change.
Okay.
Super, I'll stop, I'm sure other people have questions.
I'm not sure that they do, did any of the?
Maybe not. As a long prior member of of Hill House, I I know that flagpole and that flag well, and it always got tangled, and I was always telling people to untangle it.
I'm doing that quite often and seeing that wood rot, so, yeah.
Right, out the window with the ski pole.
Alright, so Ed's idea is durable, correct? Alright.
You might you might just want to just confirm with Catherine, the 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 length of the pole will be the same as it is now, just for confirmation.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, it is, Catherine, so you're saying, yes, it will be the same.
It is the same length.
It is the same length, and you're saying that you can't use existing hardware.
How about the diameter?
The diameter, I believe, is the same, I I'm not sure about the hardware, that was something that Rogerson was going to check with McMahon, but but we are. We will take a look at that.
Because that that would definitely sway me more towards the positive, that we're using the existing hardware.
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, the the application says custom, so custom would imply that the diameter, all the dimensions can be modified to. Fit the purpose, so. The vendor should.
Yeah, Rogerson did not seem to think any of this would be an issue.
Alright, are we ready to move on to public comments? Excuse me, say. No other comments from the commissioners? Okay, let's move on to the public.
Alright, Holland, you're first, go ahead.
Thank you. We do not oppose this application as the materiality of the flagpole could be an exception to guideline F two in this nineteen forty nine building and suggest the applicant could find evidence of original features per guideline A three. That the current wooden flagpole might have replaced a mid century modern aluminum product. We do oppose changing the visual qualities of the existing square bracket with the contemporary round bracket and ask that the new pole utilize the existing bracket. It looks exactly the same as depicted in a nineteen fifty photograph, as well as the tiebacks and bolt topper. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a comment in the public?
No other comments, back to you and, or Arien, sorry.
Now. It seems like we might be in agreement, um. Is anybody not? I don't really wanna just push on this, but do they wanna have a different opinion? Or a different suggestion? I'm a big fan of what Ed had to say, um, so I support that a lot, that's me. Anything different? Speak up guys, if not, let's move forward then. Alright, does anyone wanna make a motion?
Uh, motion to accept, to approve the application as submitted with the proviso that the existing hardware is retained and reused. And that the dimension, the, the length is, matches the existing length.
Anyone with a second? Wait a minute.
Did I miss anything, please?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna said, uh, maybe have Catherine check in with me, because they can't reuse the hardware, maybe we could have it replicated. So maybe just, um, add a little addendum there that she'll check in with me.
Alright.
If she's still checking to see if the existing hardware can be reused, so we just wanna make sure that we are, um, respectful for, her schedule.
Yeah, and consult with staff if, uh, provisos is, uh, cannot be met.
When they want to second this motion? Second, third, wow. We're voting, Commissioner Allen, aye, Commissioner, uh, Flex.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold.
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Fantastic, this has been approved.
Thank you very much, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks Catherine, thanks for being a good partner too.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Five West Cedar Street is the next up, do we have anyone here?
Patrick.
Associates.
Hi.
Thanks for your patience, Patrick.
I was noting to myself that I should find clients who don't live on West Cedar Street, that live on, uh, something closer to the start of the alphabet. But it's fascinating, I love the, I love the, um, the burying ground and the stone conservation, so.
But it's all, it's not alphabetical, right Nick?
Uh, it's, it's in order of complexity, so, although there's not that many complex, um, projects here, so. Um, but Patrick, why don't you take it, take over and, and.
Let's go. Okay, sure, let's, let's look at this, um, five West Cedar Street, um, it's been undergoing renovation, we had, uh. Um, a really fun project two and a half years ago, um, basically stabilizing the, the brick facade. It's a one and two-wide brick facade and become detached when it's coming off the building, but, um, we're closing in on finishing. And, um, basically there's a wooden fence surrounding, uh, roof terrace, used to be a drying deck. Um, there's some nineteen oh two photos that show all sorts of armatures up there for drying clothes. Um, and basically we're just replacing in kind, uh, um, uh, cedar plank and wood lattice. Um, enclosure, that, uh, you know, it's a western exposure, so the material has. Become quite weak, and so we're just replacing it. In kind, but that's, that was one of the first photos I found, I thought it was a lot of fun, um. Many years ago when I started the project. Uh, so, yeah, it's black painted, wood planks varied with a, uh, with an open gridwork, two and a half inch openings. Inch and three-eighths slats, um, four by four posts, and, um. Uh, flattened square cap with a finial on top. And we're replacing it with four by four posts, so, um, western red cedar, it's painted black. Um, but was an approved color for the exterior, it's a railings, which is a fair one ball color.
Alright, so you're literally just replacing what's there?
Yes.
Yep, uh, ju- just for some context here, um, so this, this deck is, has existed for quite some time now. We also know that there's a precedent for, um, um, uh, construction, uh, or, or use of something similar historically. As we just saw in that historic photo of West Cedar Street. Um, this to me seems like a very appropriate, um, setup here, con- considering the historic conditions of this property. Um, I think we just were here to, um, get this formally approved. Um, I was not able to find a historic permit on this, um, so Patrick, I was kind enough to come, uh, and defend this. And get this, uh, formalized and official for the homeowner, um. That I, I think this project is, is appropriate, I think it's, um, contextually appropriate, and it's been here for a while. It's an existing condition, um, and we're just rebuilding it in kind, so staff is recommending approving as submitted, um. Uh, yes, so that's it.
Alright, excellent, 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 and. Any commissioners with any questions? I'm seeing this as, again, it's just being replaced, just replacing what's already there. Um, but does someone have any concerns? If not, we will move forward. Moving forward, let's go on to the public comments. Hi, Holland.
Alright, Holland, go ahead, I'm just gonna keep you off mute permanently.
Perfect, thank you, uh, we do not oppose this application as submitted, though the reconstruction has already been completed. We would note the deck had previous railing dated to nineteen oh five, so are an exception to guideline C-three, thank you.
Thank you. And no other comments?
Nope, no other public comment.
We are closing, uh, from comments, and commissioners?
No comment, so the finish, are the, the photos represent the finished product, or the photos represent that which is to be replaced?
Those are historic, huh, those are old photos of the, what's being replaced.
Oh, I see, there's dates there, I, I should read that closely.
I do, I mean, there's so much construction and trees right now. But I went back to older photos.
No way, these are, oh yes, they're a year ago.
Yeah.
Because someone just said it's already installed, so that's where I was confused.
It, yeah, it exists, so.
But, but has, but has the replacement already been built and installed and we're doing this retroactively, is what I was trying to understand.
Yeah.
No, I, I believe, is this is just a matter of them. Just, uh, u- using, replacing what's already there. Sticking with the game plan and not doing anything different, so everything's gonna be the same.
But still to be built. And, okay, somebody said, you know, that the construction's been completed, so I wanted to understand whether we were just doing the paperwork to catch up. But it sounds like the, there is still, the, the reconstruction has yet to happen pending this conversation.
Okay, so.
That's a question, is that correct interpretation?
No, this, this has been reconstructed, so we're doing the paperwork to.
Yeah, so we are approving something retroactively that has already been built.
Yeah, the idea is that Patrick approached me about this, uh, with the understanding that it would be rebuilt in kind. Um, and I said, I, you know, I wasn't able to find the formal approvals by the commission, which is why he's here. I asked him, I was going to move him to administrative review, but then after my research, I was not able, um, to find that. And we're kind of formalizing it at this point, so, um, yes.
Okay, and I know it doesn't necessarily lead to having concerns, I just wanted to make sure we were crystal clear on the state of play. So, thank you for that elaboration.
Does anyone wanna make motion?
Make a motion to approve or submit it.
Second, second, perfect. This is a vote, Commissioner Allen, aye, Commissioner Flex.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold.
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Fantastic, this has been approved.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Thanks Patrick, appreciate your patience.
Good evening.
Thanks Patrick. Onto the next one, seventy-eight Beacon Street, do we have anyone here to represent seventy-eight Beacon Street? Please, uh, raise your hand, so we can see you.
There we have, who's, who's the applicant there?
Seventy-eight Beacon Street, going once, going twice.
Zach, it looks like.
Really?
With Cedar.
Is Zach here? Looks like Zach might not be here.
Yeah.
And let me just double check real quick.
No, Zach's not here.
Uh, let's see, let me just make sure. Yeah, I did send him an email on June seventeenth, okay, um, no Zach, so let's move on to the last application of the evening.
Okay. Twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Twenty-seven Brimmer Street, is anyone here for twenty-seven Brimmer Street? Please lift your hand in the zone platform.
There's Colin. Colin.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great, um, I'd like to do a screen share, is that okay?
Yes, yes, that makes my job so much easier.
Great.
Uh, alright, let's see. Go ahead.
Good to go? Okay, uh, we're before you tonight, uh, for a number of items. Although I understand a number of, are under administrative, uh, review and approval.
Yeah, Colin, we're here for the, the light fixtures, uh, the door hardware and the new railing.
Right, and then I actually had a question perhaps for you Nick about the planter boxes and the rear property fence line, which.
Those are not visible from the street, right?
Uh, not from Brimmer.
Let's see, let me just look at this real quick.
But from Storo.
Uh, but the, the, the planters are on private property?
I'm sorry?
Uh, the planters. Where are you, we're sorry, I'm just looking at the presentation.
Yep, um, so if I go here to the rear elevation facing Storo Drive, our proposed planters are these three windows at level one.
Window boxes.
Uh, window boxes, correct, uh, which exist above. Let me see if I can find the Storo, above the, uh, Storo, uh, fence line here.
Uh, let's see, give me a second. That's not, they're not listed on the project description in the application, so, um, technically speaking. The, if you can make them temporary, they're exempt from our review. Um, meaning you will not permanently install them into the, the masonry, but they have to be listed in the project description in order to be on the agenda. Um, yeah, so we can, we can talk later, why don't we talk about the things that are under the purview right now, and we can talk about a strategy forward with those, okay?
Okay, yeah, no, no problem, happy to reappear before you again, and then secondly. Um, it's this, um, uh, the fence line from Mount Vernon down to our site is brick. And we were proposing, uh, to replace that section as well, so again, happy to, uh, come back before you if that was not clear in our application.
Uh, yeah, I don't see that listed in the description box, that's where I base my, um, application agenda, so let's talk later about that. Let's right now talk about the things that the commission can review.
Yep, okay, great, um, so, uh, let's see here, so our, our, uh, uh, context is here. Uh, it's a, uh, six-story, uh, building, we're proposing to, uh, reconstruct the staring kind and replace. We're proposing a new handrail here, and as well as at the garden. And then, um, we're, and I'll, I'll show you the details on the next page, uh, we're also proposing, uh, two flanking wall sconces here at the. Main entrance, and then one, uh, new fixture, light fixture down in here, we propose to move this fixture over, we're gonna clean up the grills. As Nick and I have been talking, uh, to clean up this, uh, area. So, uh, the front door, uh, we're gonna refurbish the existing door. Uh, and we're, uh, proposing a new, uh, Sun Valley entrance set in polished brass, non-lacquered. Uh, with a, uh, handle, uh, cylinder lock, uh, and kick plates. And then the railing, uh, we took some inspiration from other handrails on the street. Um, and my client, uh, likes, uh, a couple of examples, uh, that I'll show you here. Um, at thirty-five Brimmer and at twenty-two Brimmer, uh, both have, uh, uh, some nice detail to them on the baluster. There's a little tulip shape here, and then at, uh, that's at thirty-five, at twenty-two, uh, Brimmer, it's, you know. Kind of a poor resolution photograph here, but it's kind of a double tulip. We managed to talk with the ironworker who did these, but he's, he has not saved the mold. Uh, he's retiring and we don't have access to that mold. Um, and so because of that, we're, we're leaning more towards, um, this one here. And, uh, just to get into a little bit of the detail. Uh, we would like to, at the end of the stringer run here, create a little bit of, of a detail, because the existing condition is rather blunt. And, uh, there's a lot of corrosion here, and. Let's see here. Um.
Quick question, is any of this original, like is the door original, is the rail original?
The doors, the doors are original, and we pro- propose to keep that and just refurbish it, maintain it, uh, new, new gasketing, weather stripping, um, but, but, um. Working new, uh, door hardware to that. And then, um, this, uh, let me see here, I just wanted to point out a, a lot of staining on, on this example. And so we wanted to lift the bottom rail up off of, um, the, um, masonry here, the stringer. Uh, so that we don't have that condition, but we thought these were two nice examples of how you could terminate, uh, the end of the stair. And, uh, dress it up just a little bit, and, and those examples are on the street, around Brimmer Street. Um, the three light fixtures, they're all the same, two here at the front door, and then one again, uh, here down at the lower level entry. Uh, let's see here, um, is this Hillgate Lantern, uh, proposed in two finishes. Uh, black with a brass, and the brass is to pick up on the new hardware, uh, color on the door, um, because this is adjacent to that. Uh, and this is the fixture we're proposing, and then the, let me see here, I guess that's all, all three items. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Alright, well, I have a quick question, uh, Nick, what are your thoughts on this?
Um, so. Yeah, I think the, the lanterns, um, that are, um, on each side of the, uh, the front door, I think they're fine, I'd recommend them for approval. I think that's okay, the one question that we had is there's a small, um, black metal piece. Um, yeah, right there, what is that?
I be- I believe that's the, uh, an old escutcheon plate, uh.
Okay.
For, for a light, uh, but I don't, I couldn't find any, uh, historic photos of this.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I'm okay with that, actually I think you're right, I do have a historic photo of this property, um. I, and then my recommendation, the other lantern that you're proposing, is that done by the service entrance?
That's correct.
Okay, um, that one seems a little more, uh. What was the other one, no, there was another one, um.
Uh, we had proposed another fixture, but that's hidden, uh, it's back in the terrace and not visible, so I didn't pull that one up. And that one's much larger, that wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think, for the, uh, lower level door.
Sorry, there was one more that I saw that I thought we should probably, uh, explore retaining, um, let me see. Uh, nope, okay, uh, I was actually looking, uh, that's something different, sorry, um, so that one I would also, uh, recommend approval. I think I wrote, um, retaining the existing one in my previous notes, but I think that was a different property, so I'm, I'm okay with that. From the staff perspective, I am a little concerned about the rail, um, let me just show you, uh, and thanks to Rochelle for finding this for us. Uh, it's a darker photo, so bear with me, um, so this is from the forties, I believe, um, here's the. Um, so this is from the forties, I believe. Um, here's the existing rail or the, um. I think this was probably a rail that was there at one point. Um, it was much more simplistic. Um, and then you can see this other rail next to it, which looks similar to, um, what was being proposed, I think. Um, but perhaps we should maybe stick with a simpler rail. I, I, I'm just considering there's no precedent for. This type of rail on this specific building. So, those are my comments, um. Yeah.
Right, so.
So there is a precedent for rail, um, you, you just might wanna, um, consider a different style or more simplistic style.
Yeah, yeah, um, thanks for sharing that photograph, so, um, it, it's a little hard to read, but could it pot- put, the neighbors rail? Could it potentially be this one? It looked pretty similar to this.
It could be, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and you would be open to something like that. We've got quite a fall here and this is not a code compliant, um. Uh, railing and, um.
I see.
Here, here's.
Yeah, that.
So.
That's a discussion for the commission. I'm just giving some recommendations here, yeah, so, yeah.
But, but it sounds like the one in the historical photograph would not be acceptable because of the lack of ballisters.
Uh, that's, that's a concern, yeah.
Cause you only had the, the three supports, right, Nick, in that older photo, the, the top, bottom and middle?
Yeah.
Entire run, so I'm, yes, that's a non-starter from.
I'm not even sure we can go in that direction with the building inspector with the cut, cause you're making it less compliant. It already is not compliant.
Right, right, that's, yeah, exactly.
In, in these circumstances, um, just because we wouldn't want to create a false narrative of a historic feature, I guess is what I'm saying, so. We could do something that's code compliant, um, but be more simplistic and rather, uh, less decorative, yeah, yeah, it's.
So you might have a full, a full army of ballisters, but you'd want a simpler design.
So I, I am gonna say that the, what we're proposing is not code compliant, cause it doesn't meet the four-inch spacing. Um, but we are working towards a safer, uh, more compliant stair. And in, in the historic complex, I, uh, context, I, I think there's an argument to be made for that. So I'm just, I'm not proposing a four-inch on center, uh, baluster, okay? Not sure that would be, you know, the way to go here, but it sounds like you're open to having ballisters. Uh, but just less ornate.
Right.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
That's what I was inclined to support. I did have a clarifying question, if I could. Um, are we retaining but refurbishing the stairs and just adding new?
We are reconstructing the staircase completely, in kind.
And is that an administrative piece, Nick, or is that included in, in our review today?
Uh, sorry, let me just, uh, get this open here.
I get, when I say, except for this little piece here.
Yeah, cause I'm trying to look at the agenda compared to the app and figure out how, and, cause I know you split it across at administrative pieces too.
Yeah, this isn't historic material, so rebuilding this would be fine, um, so. Yeah, so, and I believe that's on administrative review. Let me just double check.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so that would be fine, because in this circumstance, um, it's not a historic material, whereas the other circumstance, it was granite, which is. From a quarry that's no longer in operation, but this is, this is either brownstone or cast stone, which can be replicated.
Got it.
Yep.
I'm just not familiar with where. This unit of construction, you, you've parsed it between admin and designer review. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, so thank you.
All right, how, how do you think from you, uh, Commissioner Fonggo, are you? What are your thoughts on this? I'm, I'm curious.
I'm sorry.
What are your thoughts on this? I'm curious. I'd love to hear your opinion.
Mine?
Yes. I value you dearly.
Thank you. I.
What do you think about the rail, Mo?
I think the rail would be fine with the, with the little knob in the middle of it, of, as a replication of something nearby.
Okay. And no one has any questions about the lanterns? No one thinks it's too modern or too big? So are we all set as far as? As the light fixtures to add on both sides of the door?
Did we, oh, there they are. Did we get a cut sheet for those?
They showed that, that was shown, um, at the beginning.
Thank you, bouncing around between different, oh, there we go, thank you.
There were two lan- there was a, uh, lemon that was shown.
Yeah, um. Where'd they go?
Yeah.
Was that coming from Colin?
Oh, okay.
Uh, that, that might have been it. Colin, can you show the, the lanterns again, please?
Oh, the cut sheet, sure.
Thanks.
Let me know if you have any issues, Colin, displaying.
Oh, I thought I was displaying.
I, I can see it.
No, are, is, are these mine? Yeah, I think these are mine, right? Yeah, let me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the lanterns. I don't, I don't know how you're seeing it.
Really?
Um, I can see both, they're both sharing at the same time.
Because, I mean, it looks a little modern to me. Am I the only one who's seen that?
It's got the contemporary line to it.
Are people okay with this or? Cause I'm, I'm looking like, I might think that that necessarily matches the neighborhood. It does look contemporary. It makes me think of Cambridge, not too much Boston, but, you know.
Well, it is, it's inconsistent with the old, the thumb latch, doors, door hardware. Inconsistent is probably the wrong word, but.
Well, no, I would, I would say inconsistent is the right word, because the door latch is, I believe, more appropriate for the neighborhood. This lantern looks, again, uh, very modern. Colin, what's another example of a lantern that you're proposing?
Uh, I, I supplied my client with a, a few recommendations. And, uh, this is, this is one that they, uh, came back with, so, uh, they wanted me to. Uh, seek your approval with this, so I, I can certainly come back to you with an alternate.
It, it seems like Colin might now have to come back for the wall anyway. If, if you were not comfortable with this lantern. Arian, he could, he could come back with something that you feel is more traditional. If, if you want to do that, that seems fine to me.
Okay.
And that won't hold you up, right? I mean, that's a finishing touch.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that might be better, maybe have a couple of different alternatives to, to deliberate on.
All right, so we're not gonna concentrate on, on the lantern tonight. We're concentrating on the, uh.
It's the railing.
The railing.
And, and the door hardware.
In the harbor, yeah.
All right, so does anyone have any issue with the door hardware?
None from me.
Uh.
Numbers are existing or existing font?
Existing.
Thank you.
To remain.
Uh, I have no problem with the lock and door handle. All right. So let's move forward. Let's move on to public comments.
Okay, uh, let's see, there's, all right, Holland, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Mo.
My, my computer ran out of battery and I had to get it plugged in. So I missed, uh, right after my comment on the railing, I went offline. I'm sorry, I missed.
You didn't miss much.
I didn't leave the meeting, I was, I just ran out of battery on my computer. Now I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay. All right, Holland, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. We do not oppose the new light fixtures as they are in traditional locations. Though, single-color fixtures could be less modern to fully satisfy guideline E six. New exterior mounting should be through mortar and not brick. We do not oppose the proposed door hardware as it satisfies guideline E five. We do not oppose the new railings as they satisfy the second portion of guideline A three pertaining to new work and that they are appropriate with regard to size. Shape, material and design, though we are concerned with the first portion of guideline A three, which requires evidence of missing historical features. And we could find no historic evidence of a similar railing. We do oppose incising the masonry to create a new detailed stair termination, because there's no documentation to support. That this is a replacement of a missing architectural feature for the first part of guideline A three and is destroying fabric unlike the railing. Thank you.
Don't take any other public comment, uh, Arian, so, uh, back to you.
Excellent, well, cards are finished. All right, my fellow commissioners, well, how are we feeling about the detail? I have questions about that as well, because if it's not there originally. Um, why are we adding it? And. Again, we already know how I feel about the lanterns and I'm glad we're gonna be working on that, I remember the date, um. Anyone else concerning the handrails? I think we're all in agreement for the door and the, the, uh, latch.
I, excuse me, uh. Uh, I have a question about the light fixture which the. The, the, the Civic Association mentioned, which was, th- these light fixtures are supposed to be two colors. With black and brass?
Correct, yeah.
And, do we, are we approving that in lieu of just a single color? Is that, is that a common feature to have a double, uh, black and brass?
They're, they're coming back for, with a new fixture, Mo. I think that's what you missed when you, when you dialed out.
Oh, okay, oh, so, oh, uh, uh, all right.
Yeah, so we're just, we're only concentrating on the, on the handrail.
Yes.
And the, the door and the, uh, new latch.
Right, so, so the, no, I don't have any more comments.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion? Or is anybody holding back? Okay.
I make a motion to, uh. Approve as submitted. Is that right? What with, uh, we're getting new fixtures? Uh, except.
Uh, they're gonna, okay.
I'm sorry, except with the exception of the fixture, which is to be resubmitted.
Mm-hmm.
The, we're approving the rail as submitted and the stair, the stair ending. What is the, I don't, I guess I don't know what to say. I don't have any problem with the proposal. And, and I, I, I approve that as submitted as well in the motion.
And the door hardware, Mo?
Oh, the, the hardware is okay. I, yes, the door hardware.
And what about the design on the steps?
On the what?
They, they, they're, uh, proposing to add a design that doesn't, that's not fair?
All right.
I, 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 I don't have a problem with that. I approve all, I approve of that too. So I'm approving everything except the resubmission of the light fixture. In my motion, is that correct?
Those are the things that are on the table, yes.
That, that's what's on the table.
That, is that, is that a clear enough motion or do I need to restate it?
Can you restate it? Cause I, I'm not, I'm not sure about.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the railing and the stair ending as submitted. Uh, than that the, uh, light fixture be resubmitted. Or when the door hardware is submitted, approved as submitted as well.
And anyone seconding?
I seconded.
Okay, so you guys are into the, the new. We're adding something to a building that's never been there before, in a historic neighborhood, and we're into this? Okay.
You, you, you have to take a vote on it now, cause there's, it's been seconded, yeah.
I'm about to say that right now. Commissioner Allen, no, nay. Commissioner Fleck?
Hi.
Commission, Commissioner Fonggo.
Hi.
Commissioner Given.
Hi.
Commissioners Steel.
Hi.
The eyes have it.
Hmm.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Colin. I'll give you a bus tomorrow, okay?
Yep, sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Nick was said fifty-two Cedar Lane Way withdrawn.
Uh, fifty-two Cedar Lane Way was moved to administrative, because there was an approval from the commission prior. And they're just, um, they're, um, keeping it as is essentially.
Thank you.
Yep, good question.
Administrative view. Are you popping up the, there we go. All right, so this is a section where the, uh, staff is gonna go over this. Do we have any commissioners that are having trouble with that? Or have any questions on what's on the administrative view?
I move they be approved as submitted.
Well, we have to go to public comment first.
Oh, sorry.
I like your enthusiasm.
Yeah.
All right.
I do too.
All right, um, Holland, go ahead.
Thank you. We just have a public comment on, uh. Nine Temple Street. We oppose the proposed light fixture for Nine Temple Street as inappropriate in size and style to satisfy guideline E six. And suggest a larger fixture with clear glass. Thank you.
Thank you, Holland.
That is all from public comments. All right. Are we going to submit commissioners' administrative review as it stands? Commissioner Allen, I, also, I find Commissioner Go, uh, Fonggo did originally, uh. Put in a motion and it was seconded by Commissioner Given, so Commissioner Allen, hi. Commissioner Fleck?
Hi.
Commissioner Fonggo.
Hi.
Commissioner Given.
Hi.
And Commissioner Steel.
Hi.
The eyes have it. Administrative view moving forward.
Cool.
Staff updates.
All right, um, it's very quick. There's not, there's not, uh, a lot to update you on, um, just to let you know, um. We have a, a new, uh, pending landmark that is available for public comment. Uh, which is the, um, the Bussy House over in Dorchester on Adams Street in Lower Mills, just across the street from me. And, um, if you have any comments you want to read that study for, just go right over to our website. Uh, but no, um, updates, uh, Beacon Hill related.
Nice.
That is it.
It's an interesting.
All right, my dear commissioners. Does anyone want a motion to end the meeting?
I will.
Hi.
Who wants to second it? All right.
Nice job, Arian.
Thank you very much. My guess is the eyes have it, there are no names.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, guys.
Have a great night, everyone.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy summer. See you July.
All right, bye-bye.